He's got it.
Okay.
There we go.
You need a chance, so.
Yeah.
David, can you hear us now? Somebody can. Good to go. Okay. David's here as well.
Yep, got it now. Good to go.
Kurt is not. Now that everybody's awake, we're set now. All right, report of meeting notification on a video recording reminders.
Yes, meetings promptly noticed and as a reminder, the meeting is being.
Welcome visitors. Do we have any public comment at this time? Jen, are you able to hear us?
Group speaker.
So yours? If you hit audio typically it'll go away on the bottom. I knew sign language, I could say something for.
I do.
I know a couple of things, but I don't think I should really use them here. Might be wrong. Those are the only things you remember when you take a little. Definitely not because of teachers either. It's just a kid thing. Okay, um, actually about, okay, no public comment then. Actually a highlight on you on Eagle Scout project.
I don't like standing up there. Part of my Eagle Scout project is actually maps that have been going on the trail. I go.
Thank you.
Alright, so. Personally, I get lost on that trail. You know, it's only four and a half kilometers long. I measured it out myself. So that's why the map is there. If you have to actually flip over the map, you bought phones with one. There's a QR code on the back. And that is now linked to a online map. So if you don't want to carry around a piece of paper with you, you can just scan it on your phone and it's always there. The P D O. So. The first part of my project was finding a place to put the sign. I always thought like right in front of that trail there, there's something there and I've always thought of that as the start. Instead of where the old cross-country start trail is, that kind of looks like an awkward place to start. So with that, I had to measure out every single trail to get my map to be exact. Each of. So you can see in the map there, we had that laser cut out. I painted every little part of it, put it back in. So you can reference every point on that to objects such as the baseball field, the football field or. Or the parking lot.
Next slide.
Yep. And then I took cross-country skis as trail markers to show where to go and which trails are which and then along the trail. Since the yellow trail is the only one long enough to have kilometer markers, there is one kilometer marker somewhere along the way. It's around the western eastern side of the school. And then there is another yellow marker up front right before you cross the road. That is screwed on to the old cross-country sign. And then there's another one along the side that is blue and yellow, showing that you've gone on the other trail and joined the blue trail. The total, as I said before, the total amount of trails adds up to four and a half kilometers. The outer loop, the yellow one, which goes all the way back around to where you started, is 2.3 kilometers. The loop, red loop above the baseball field, that is 1.2 and the blue down at the bottom is one kilometer in total. So. I have all my thank yous for mainly for Bill Emery because he came up with the idea and showed me that there's need for a cross-country skiing trail. Eric Frazier and his business, Noble True, supply most of the wood and the laser cutters in order for me to laser cut off my map and a place to build. And then I had donations from Roberts Concrete, one of my old scout masters, Tim Olson, and. Jen's a neighbor and then my mom and dad, John and Trish Rockers. And then my main volunteer was my current scout master, Brian Lane. Any questions?
Cool. Do you cross-country ski?
I do not. I won't be using it. I hope other people don't.
Great project. Very nice. Is this the very last thing you had to finish up for?
Um, no, I actually have a merit badge that requires me to stick around.
Fortunately, you've hit the longest one we've ever had.
Yeah.
We do have to finish before the day ends, so.
Maybe we should push it back an hour instead of over an hour.
Final part of this should be.
Do you know how many Eagle Scouts the true fair is now? I know the trailer was pretty full.
It's over forty, I think. Yep, and then. I don't know about James. I think James is working on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Sorry, one question for you. The QR code, where is that located? The P D O.
So that is currently located in my father's drive. I don't have to, you know, that's you, sure.
Remap this to the district, okay? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. It sounded like when I pulled it up, it didn't look like it's. So, okay, perfect. Something could probably help. All right, next, comments by board members, super impending.
Yeah, so I would like to report a grant that we received, but Liz from Northwood Tech is here as well. Liz is also on our community task force, but I asked her to be present, she couldn't, so. Because she did the bulk of the grant writing and Northwood Tech, C V T C, St. Croix Central, Stanley Boyd. Luer and Asio Farochard, all part of this grant and. This was the largest one, the governor announced it at U W Eau Claire Tuesday, $10 million all in. This portion is approximately 3.1% St. Croix Central, correct?
Well, with Northwood Tech and St. Croix Central combined, it's 3.1. So there's about one. Six five million for an advanced manufacturing training sector, so utilized by both students as well as businesses, but on the St. Croix Central's such a property. So that's about the, we were getting it out, that was about five thousand acres of building that we're looking at. So looking at putting plastic injection mold, injection mold, which. Overall, what they have manufacturing space, planning for lab training as well as some speed certification with early learning to. Manufacturing careers. And then with this being continued to grow, we're also going to operate our own space six. Some of these students, that's a fourteen products, a whole of them that will have the. Into New York High School. So those are kind of our plans for last week.
So again, about totaling 2.53 million for St. Croix Central, but 881,000 for equipment and furniture. Up up and e all in and then 1.65 for that space specifically 5,000 square feet of, you know, potentially our 40,000 square foot C T addition. So what that means for the budget and the referendum is get to be determined. I think I just. Need to work with Northwood Tech, C V T C and Mark Johnson, Will D A N E. Exactly how that all fits together, but it's most certainly great news when we get, you know, three point some million dollars. For our C T program to partner with, well-respected, obviously, Northwood Tech and C V T C. So great news. Stay tuned with specifics, but again. Liz called me two, two times that day, leaving messages. I'm so excited to report that and then. Yeah, right. Don't tell anybody. Yeah, so great news for us. And again, thank you very much for all you were with that.
Everybody have any comments if they want to follow that one? No? It's great. Next, we have scheduled presentation with my guests and staff members, scientific random sample survey results.
Peter is online. He's going to share and again, Peter, if you recall, you just have to hit. Oh yeah, have to hit that box at the up barrel where we go to share your screen with us.
Bye. Oh yes, here we go.
So yeah, if you, if you see that box next to the wavy hand at the bottom, if you hit that, you can present your screen. Hit that.
Perfect. Should be sharing.
Yep, we can see it. Thank you.
You got it? All right. Should I just kick off here?
Yeah, yeah.
Wonderful. Wonderful. It's, it's a pleasure. Too bad I couldn't be there in person. Last Wednesday would have been perfect, but whether, whether. Put that at peril. So just remind everybody what we undertook with for the district. We spoke with 400 randomly selected households across the district. The interviews were conducted between November 3rd and the 18th. Average interview time was 15 minutes, non-response rate was 5%. The 400 sample is projectable to the district as a whole to within plus or minus 5% in 95 out of 100 cases. And just to give you a profile of what the sample looked like, 42% indicated they were cellphone-only households. 12% were landline only and 46% had both landline and cellphones. Continuing with the demographics. 28% indicated they lived in the district for 10 years or less. 29% had lived in the district for over 30 years. The median comes in right at about 12 years is a typical resident in the district. 16% indicated that they had households with preschoolers. 32% had children attending the St. Croix School District, St. Croix Central School District. And 63% had no children. And I always say at this point, this is not putting an age on it. It's simply the lack of presence of a child. So you could have a millennial in here that doesn't have a child. They're an empty nester for the purpose of the chart. 20% indicated that they were renters. 47% indicated that they were homeowners with a home valued under 200,000. 30% had a home valued over 200,000. If we continue with the demographics, 7% more people indicated they were Republicans than Democrats with 17% indicating they were independent. 43% indicated they were conservative, 29% moderate, 26% liberal. The, the median educational attainment in the district is some college experience, albeit short of college graduation. A third indicated they were high school graduates or less. Well, 38% indicated they were college graduates. That's a four-year degree, but it also includes any postgraduate or doctoral work that people talked about. And then finally, on the demographics. 20% indicated they were between 18 and 34, while 35% indicated they were over the age of 55. Median comes in right at about 47 and a half years. The financially stressed versus the financially comfortable households. This is yo-yoed all over the place during the pandemic, from surges to vaccines, to closings, to shutdowns, everything. What we've seen in the upper Midwest now over the past six weeks on this, it's 40% of folks indicating they're financially stressed. So you're a little bit under what we've been seeing. 2% more women than men, and then you can see the area of the district, 46% in the Hammond area, 48% of the Roberts area, 7% in the rest. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Okay, I'm getting some odd feedback. Is it coming through clear on your end?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay, excellent. Why don't I, at this point, before we go into the survey, anybody have questions on methodology or demographics? Hearing none. Survey says, first, we tried to get some information about what happened on April 6th. First off, we asked folks, did they vote April 6th? 34% said they had, 65% said no, they didn't, and 1% didn't want to be honest and admit they hadn't voted and just said they couldn't remember. Now, those that said they didn't vote, we asked them, why didn't they vote? And you can see the, the, all the different answers on the side of the 65%. What leads the list is no time too busy. And sadly, this is what we've seen over the last eight years when I look at the profile of who is, has no time and busy, is its parents. And so that's always a concern. Parents are very difficult to get to vote in the past decade. 17% said they forgot, 19% said they weren't interested. Those are typically empty nesters. 14% said age and illness, 12% admitted they thought it would pass. And 11% said they had no children. The, the typical items we see, but you do have one in five and it is 100%. Or I think it was 91% of it is made up of parents in the district. Said they didn't have any time and they were too busy to come vote. Now amongst those that said they voted, we asked, how did they vote? 36% indicated they support the bond, 36% said they supported the levy, 4% couldn't remember, 57% voted for both. So we asked if they opposed any, either question or both. What was the main reason for opposing? This is open-ended. They can tell us anything. Two items led the list with more than 20%. Their taxes were too high and 22% said it just wasn't needed. 11% thought specifically about stadium updates, 10% not enough information, 9% said the cost of the ask was too high. 8% wanted a tax decrease and 6% each said poor spending in the unstable economy, 3% said no children. So what's driving at the top of the mind amongst opponents is the taxes and the need question. When we went then read through a specific list and asked. Was this a major reason for opposing, minor reason or not a factor at all in your opposition? What leads the list is the statement. Everything okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And what leads the list is I did not see a compelling need for the school district funding request. 75% of opponents said that was a major factor. It was a factor for 92% of opponents. What it comes in second, my property taxes are already too high. 72% said it was a major factor, 86% total. What actually leads though in the list, and we saw this in referendums in late 2020 and early 21. Is the pandemic and the statement was with the current pandemic and economic uncertainty, it was not the time to ask residents to increase funding. 71% indicated it was a major factor, but actually 93% of opponents said that it was, it impacted their decision. Those, those three really stand out. What also has 58% as a major factor is the statement, there seemed to be no significant negative consequences if the fund requests were not approved. Then not enough information and the inclusion of frivolous items was down at the bottom with only an impact of a third. What, what drives it and we'll talk about it when we get to the, the two questions we tested. The fact that they didn't see negative consequences, that feeds into the perception that there is no compelling need. Negative consequences, logical consequences, however they're phrased is if this doesn't pass, something is not going to happen. Or something bad's going to happen, or what is the result of it? That's what drives folks' perception of need. Because remember on election day, you want folks to walk into the voting booth and make a simple cost benefit analysis. How much does this cost and what are we getting for the dollars? And then make that the equation and what drives that, that perception and need then comes into the logical consequences and how important it is. So in making that cost benefit analysis, we do ask a whole bunch of questions upfront to make sure they're not bringing any additional baggage into the voting booth. And that's why we ask these atmospherics. So first off, how do they rate the quality of public schools? 82% rated favorably, 13% rated unfavorably and 5% for unsure. This is a very good rating and it's a good rating in the, in the light of the pandemic. Where the norm across the upper Midwest before the pandemic was about 20%, excellent rating. What it is now is 15%. It has dropped significantly significantly. And the concern now is it's the macro level. It's the overall quality of education that's being able to be provided to students over the pandemic. There's just less enthusiasm among folks than there was in the past. Relatively, yours is actually strong at 23%. Open-ended, what's the most serious issue facing the district? They can tell us whatever they would like and we code it. Only two reach the threshold of double digits, which would be a, a, a concern, not a major concern, not 25, 30%. Lack of funding is a concern amongst 15% and the pandemic itself is a concern amongst 14%. Then it's the serious items in single digits from retaining staff to lack of discipline, division over masks and student mental health. So there is not one major serious issue that the community is seeing. It's more depending on your demographics than what your makeup is. I will point out that one thing that is not on this list, interestingly, is a top of the mind response is high taxes. And so we'll look at taxes a little more specifically in a bit, but as a top of the mind concern, folks were coming up with other concerns rather than taxes. How does the quality of education compare to three years ago with a pandemic stuck in the middle of it? Relatively, you're strong on this. 25% say it's better, 9% say it's worse. The norm on this right now is about two to one. So you're just over, you're about two and a half to one, so it's relatively strong. And there are districts that have more people saying it's worse now than better. So people still see a positive direction in the quality of education. What about in the comparison to neighbors? 32% indicate that the quality of education is better in St. Croix Central. 9% say it's worse, 59% say it's about the same. So it's a 32 to nine ratio, about four to one. The norm on this is about two and a half to three to one. People normally feel better about how they compare to their neighbors than they compare historically, so it's a little bit of an uptick. But on both of these, you do have folks seeing that it's still better than it was in the past and it's better than when they compare it to the neighbors. Some specific perceptions then? First off, does the district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? 69% indicate that's the case. Norm on that right now is about 55%, so very strong. Does the district ask for a property tax increase only as a last resort? 68% agree with that statement. 82% believe the high-quality schools increase property values. 79% trust you to do what's right for children. 82% believe that the schools are a good value for the investment. 73% indicate you've done a good job communicating. 63% are satisfied with the decision-making. And this really is the question over the course of the pandemic. No matter what decisions districts had to make for if schools were open, how they were open, what the parameters were of being open and everything. There was large dissatisfaction. You have 63% agreeing, 26% disagreeing. That's actually very strong. That's better than two to one on this question. The norm on this is about 50% satisfaction to 45% dissatisfaction. And it just really kind of depends on what the topic is. Last year's schools opened, it was actually more folks that were negative than positive on this. It's been really a, a, a high-wire act to balance the perception and the decisions that districts have had to make. But the, the community overall gives you higher marks than other communities. And then finally, the question at the bottom is schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. 64% agree with that, 25% disagree with that. The key on this question is how many people disagree in concept? Because I haven't said bond referendum or operating levy, we haven't talked about a cost, the purpose of the funding, anything. How many people in concept would not support a property tax increase? And it's a very manageable 25%. The threshold we're looking for, this one is 30% or less. So it was telling us, it's not that everybody's going to be thrilled with tax increases or anything like that. There's a willingness in the community to have a discussion about what is needed. Well, how do they feel about the buildings and facilities? They think that the buildings and facilities are good. 88% rate them favorably, but it's 75% of that, 88% say they're good. 22% say they're excellent, 8% say only fair and nobody said poor. The key in the discussion then is the improvements in the bond referendum to put forward is how, how does it make the facilities move from good to excellent? And what we found, especially across the upper Midwest, it is important to link those building improvements. To what is being taught, whether it is curriculum, programming, the academic quality. Very few districts just want nice buildings to have nice buildings. They really want it linked to the academic enterprise and curriculum and programming. What are the job ratings then of the board and the administration? 62% rate the board favorably, 26% rated unfavorably. The administration, 64 to 16. You could see the board is about two and a half to one ratio. The administration is four to one. Both of those are above the norms. You, although you do have higher levels of uncertainty than we typically see. And some of this, we've noticed this in certain districts and what is making up that uncertainty is empty nesters. They've had their attention drawn elsewhere. They, they don't seem to be paying attention to local units of government and that includes school districts we've worked with and cities we've worked with. Just higher levels of uncertainty when we ask for specifics. They've been watching the pandemic and vaccinations and social justice and all of these things. They're just not as in tune to local issues and government at this point in time. And then teachers, the closer you get to kids, the more adoration there is. Teachers, 85 to eight, very strong. Overall evaluation of financial management then, it's, it's very strong, 62%. And when we look back at those previous statements and the perceptions about how folks rated the financial aspect. You, you have a lot of financial credibility, credibility in the, in the minds of residents. And that's critical at this point in time. There are districts that are upside down on this, where there are more people rating it unfavorably than favorably. The 62% is very strong. We, I, I mentioned property taxes earlier. Would we look specifically? And ask about the dark green is total taxes, the light green is school taxes. Their perception of total property taxes, 42% rate them high, 53% average, 1% low. On the school taxes, 43%, the perception's high, 48% average, 1% low and higher levels of uncertainty. Some people don't, there's even a difference between what goes to schools versus cities and counties. So what I'm looking for in this one is the, the percent in the high category. 42% indicate that their total property taxes are high. The threshold that we use to say a, a district has a hostile tax climate is 50% in the high category. So you are below that and it is an important distinction. I would classify the district. So you are below that. Um and it is an important distinction. I would classify the district as tax sensitive. It's not, it what's the difference? Tax sensitive and it goes back to that previous question, there's a willingness to have a discussion. Districts and I've had districts in the last twelve year, twelve months that have been sixty-two percent, sixty-four percent, very high and somewhat high. That almost then becomes, I'm not even going to listen because my perception is taxes are are too high to begin with. Uh it really is, then it leads into a willingness to have a discussion in the community. Are the schools adequately funded? Um well, folks don't know. Fifty percent say yes, they are, forty-one percent say no, they're not. And you are unique to what we have found over the course of the pandemic um in that um most districts have had more people think they're adequately funded uh for three reasons. They believed everybody saved money when schools shut down last spring. They believe then that the federal government uh with the COVID relief dollars that were given multiple times, provided an inflow of money to to districts. And then finally, what the state of Wisconsin's done with its funding, funding mechanism. So where we see typically more folks saying, yes, my district's adequately funded, yours are just more confused and they really don't know. So you have to explain the story on what those dollars have meant uh for the district from uh from the federal and the state. Now, have they been following the discussions uh on facilities, uh long-term facilities plan? No, they have not. Uh that this is not surprising in light of everything going on. That there are items that have taken their attention away. Only five percent indicate they're following very closely. Forty-one percent indicate they're what they're following very or somewhat closely. And almost sixty percent indicate that they're not really following at all. We do ask street perception questions though, just to see how people tip this into the trust aspect. Do they believe though, keeping in mind that only five percent are following very closely? Do they think the district has done a good job of involving the community? Sixty-eight percent indicate, yes, that is the case. Do they believe the district will come up with a plan that benefits students and staff? Three-quarters of residents agree with that. And then finally, do they believe that you the district will come up with a plan that's fair to local taxpayers? Sixty-four percent agree with that statement, almost two-thirds. So this goes into, you do have limited awareness of of the discussions going on. But there is that inherent trust uh in the district on involvement, on financials and everything like that. It is important to make sure though that the community understands that this plan is coming from a facilities task force. Uh because that just talks, that shows the involvement um and it gets the community to buy in uh to any plan that comes forward. So what is their predisposition? If they heard the district was going to ask for a property tax increase, are they for any? Are they against any or are they persuadable for some and against others? Uh your district asked street and that's out um at two percent more people saying that they're for all than against all, twenty-five to twenty-three. Anytime that's positive, oh sorry, anytime that's positive, we're surprised. The norm on this for successful referendums in the past twenty-four months has been minus five, meaning they have, there's five percent more opposition, core opposition than core support. You actually have two percent more core support, but the key is going to be the fifty percent obviously that are persuadable. Um and so what we do then is we go and get a little more detail. And this, we asked this question uh for the purpose uh realizing that the referendums that we've uh we tell folks about and get their question uh ask them about is a tax-neutral uh referendum. What we want to understand is their tolerance in the community if a tax increase was on the table and there is. A tax increase for a bond, twenty-eight percent would support nothing. But the median for those willing to support a property tax increase comes in at about five, five dollars and fifty cents. So there's a willingness, if necessary, to support a tax increase. What is the tax increase would they support for? Well, three of them are very strong and one is more split, not surprising. What leads the list is improvements to building infrastructure, including technology and HVAC and electrical systems. Seventy-two percent indicate they would support a property tax increase for that purpose. Seventy percent would support um additional space at the high school for career and technical education programming. And sixty-six percent would support a classroom addition for four K program to the elementary school. What divides the community is the maintenance and improvements to the high school stadium, including a new track, artificial turf and bleachers. Forty-two percent indicate they support, fired forty-five percent opposed. Um I would look at this chart and say it even the stadium is not a deal killer when we break this out. What is a deal killer when we break up components? When we have in concept thirty-five percent of people supporting and sixty-five percent opposing uh where it has the potential. The stadium will require explanation. If I recall correctly from when I presented earlier to the facilities team, um I believe that the 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 high school stadium makes up approximately ten percent of the package uh is is the entire package uh cost. That's important to share because the thing with stadium improvements, people see what's happened when NFL teams build stadiums and they think the costs are very expensive. Uh and so they have the idea that this costs a heck of a lot more than it actually does. So it is important to put that into context for people. Um and that, you know, the cost, the cost with this being divided at ten percent, just communicate that out to folks. When we come back and ask about the overall idea of improvements then of the four items we tested, sixty-six percent say that it's their good idea, thirty-six, thirty percent say it's a bad idea. If we look at intensity, there's not a lot of intensity. It's two to one good idea to bad idea. What about the the thirty million dollar uh S um a cost for this? Uh testing this to look at sticker shot, does people think that it's that it seems reasonable? Is it a fair price? For the components that we talked about? Fifty-one percent indicated it was fair, forty-two percent indicated no, and seven percent were unsure. Um you actually have a majority saying, yeah, it seems reasonable for the items that we've discussed. But at the end of the day, what uh referendums like this do not win or lose based on the price, the cost of the package. They win or lose based on how much it cost the individual uh uh resident on their uh on their property. So we told residents then, since the new bond referendum would replace a portion of the levy for expiring referendum debt, it is estimated the property tax rate for debt would not increase above the current level if the referendum passed. Sixty percent support, thirty-nine percent oppose and two percent are unsure. You still don't have a lot of intensity. You only have twenty-eight percent feeling strongly one way or the other. Strong support is up uh a third over strong opposition. When we ask folks what their reason was for their decision on to support or oppose the bond, the blue bars indicate the reasons for support, the red bars operate uh show the reason for opposition. What leads the list? Seventeen percent, education's important, sixteen percent, there's no tax increase, twelve percent children. Um and then you have the the need and I I go back to I talked about earlier for the opponents of the April sixth election. What they didn't see were negative consequences and they did not see the compelling need. At this point, for what folks have heard the purpose of the funding is, you have thirteen percent that are saying this is needed. Whether it's just overall, whether it's the athletic updates, CT east-based infrastructure. On the key on that is going to make that the dominant reason for support. And because nobody's going to wake up on election day and say I have to go vote because I'm not getting a tax increase. They have to understand that it's important to do so. Uh what are the reasons for opposition? Fourteen percent indicate there's poor spending, seven percent, their taxes are too high, no children, they want the tax decrease. Four percent not needed and two percent uh need more information. Let's flip over and ask then about a potential property tax increase for an operating levy. There's actually tolerance, it's actually a little bit more tolerance for tax increase for operations. Uh comes in roughly at about six bucks a month. So when we tell them on this one, since a new operating levy would replace a portion of the levy for expiring referendum debt is estimated, the property tax rate would not increase above the current level if the referendum passed. Same thing as the bond. There's more support for the levy than the bond at this point. Sixty uh six percent support, thirty-two percent oppose. Once again, though, only about one of four folks feel strongly at this point. What's the reason on the levy? Even more pronounced, education's important, fourteen percent, uh they have children, the need to retain staff. And that was the purpose. We told them that the funding would be used for. Um and then the need at the three percent, you actually have seventeen percent already that are saying that this is needed. Twelve percent, there's no tax increase. What about reasons for opposition? None of them hit double digits, but poor spending, no children, they would like the tax decrease, taxes are too high, not needed or need more information. We then tested four arguments for and four arguments against. And asked, would this make you more likely or much more likely, somewhat more likely or no difference in supporting the referendums? What leads the list is in comparison to neighboring school districts, teachers and district staff in our district receive less compensation. We need additional funding to keep and attract teachers and staff. Forty-two percent indicate it makes a much more likely, impact of sixty-nine percent. Deferred maintenance projects are expected and necessary to protect the investment our community has made in the schools. Thirty-seven percent, much more likely, total impact of potentially of seventy-two percent. It is important to invest to keep our schools high quality. Or I'm sorry, to remain competitive with neighboring school districts, we need to continue offering programs and facilities to attractive to students. Thirty-six percent uh indicate that that makes it much more likely, total impact of seventy-two percent. And the same percentage, uh it is important to invest in our schools to keep them high quality, which in turn increases property value for residents. The bottom three really are all the same impact. Keeping and attracting student, there are teachers uh does have more of an impact, a more intensity by five points. What about four arguments against? First off, you could see there's less intensity and the much more likely to oppose. The green goes from uh thirty-six to forty-two percent on the much more likely, much more likely to oppose, it's twenty to twenty-five percent. So they have less impact. What leads the list is it, your opponents are very concerned about property taxes. And we saw that in the reason for opposition on April sixth, but it doesn't kind of go beyond that in the district itself. Local property taxes are going up too quickly. We can't afford uh to pay, put more taxes for education on the backs of homeowners. What comes in second? The federal government has provided additional funding for schools through COVID relief dollars. Twenty-three percent say much more likely to oppose, impact of forty-three percent. The state of Wisconsin has provided adequate funding increases for education. Twenty-one percent, much more likely, impact of forty-five percent. And the funding for schools is adequate. They need to spend the money they have better, twenty and a total impact of forty-five. The end of the day though, we put these uh uh these messages out there because these are going to be messages of of support and opposition uh in the community. And we want to see initially, is there any impact? Is it going to change behavior? And what we see pretty much is folks are, those arguments operate in an echo chamber. So how would they vote in April? On the bond referendum, it's virtually unchanged from the 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 first time we asked the question. Sixty-one percent indicate that they would support the bond, thirty-seven percent would oppose and three percent are unsure. And on the operating levy, virtually unchanged, sixty-five percent support, thirty-three percent oppose, three percent unsure. So at the end of the day, you know, I think both questions look very good. It is going to be important to communicate. Let me stop the share here. It's going to be very important to tell the community, um you know, especially on the bond referendum, what the specific purpose is and how the money's going to be used and the breakdown, especially on the stadium. And to put that in perspective, um you also though, it is confusing for folks. I've been doing this twenty-seven years. I don't understand school finance. I will never pretend to understand school finance. But you have to basically tell folks that they're getting something for nothing. The good news for the district is, first off, you're not going to be the only district that is in this position. I was in Western Wisconsin last week um and there's another district, then the same thing. That it's going to be, they're, the district is going to be getting something for nothing and an operating levy. The good news is like that district, you have a reservoir of trust on the financial uh aspect of the district. You can go out and share that information. And it and explain it and it will be trusted. Um and so with with both of those caveats um and pushing the need for both, what are the consequences? What's going to happen on bond referendums, it's about the opportunities students wouldn't have. Um as opposed to um any sort of negative consequences. On the operating levy, there are logical consequences and when you put, you saw there's a basis in of of of, you know, one in seven people already talking about a reason for support is they're concerned about losing staff. You know, that sort of information in the community is important to have because nobody wants to support something that is a nice to have instead of a have to have. So I think on this, on that note, I will open it up to any questions you might have. I've rendered everybody speechless.
Means you've done a great job. Majority of the room has heard it twice.
Oh, good. Okay, that I did, that that aspect I didn't know.
Any questions for Peter?
When I look at kind of all comprehensive in a whole study, it's about getting people out to vote.
Yes.
I mean, that's kind of what it appears is that it's enthusiasm because it's about the same on both sides. The strong and it's just about getting people out because in sheer numbers, they both pass, it appears. Just the more people, the better.
A- absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're in a position now, it, there was a time where greater turnout didn't necessarily hurt school districts. I'm convinced now, if everybody votes in your district, it passes. What I'm, what I, what concerns me, well, there there's two things that concern me. I'm getting old and I'm getting more and more conservative in how I think about people's behavior and voting and everything like that. Uh and that's first off, the macro, you know, something completely out of your control. We have, I don't know, the 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 next variant after Omicron in April and we shut everything down or what have you. Things completely out of the district's control. That used to be unlikely since March of twenty twenty, I worry about that all the time uh with my clients. Second off, the concern is, to your point, is the get out the vote effort and making people the the vote because it in a lot of districts that have failed over the course of the last five years. This is just not during the pandemic. It is uh before the pandemic. It is because there's an assumption, people will look at these numbers and say, two-thirds of people support. You don't win a survey, you win elections. And that that thirty percent opposition, they will show up if there's two feet of snow. I I I in April, again. The opponents in 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 the problem districts have, and it's specifically younger parent, parents of children and elementary and preschool parents is. They again and again have shown that if the kids have a sport that night or dance or what have you and they're running late, they're going to get the kid to the whatever activity than to go vote. Uh and so early voting, absentee voting, all of those efforts because they're your most likely supporter. Parents, if ten parents walk into the voting booth, eight are going to support. But if they under-represent like they consistently do in failing referendums, that's when it becomes a problem. When turnout goes from thirty percent to twenty percent, it's just that the that the opponents where if it's the total community, there's there, they can overcome that. If only twenty percent vote, they can just have significant power.
So Peter, you're also available for consultation in our referendum communication as well, correct?
Absolutely. This is, this is all-inclusive. If there's any lawyers, don't be offended, but I'm not a lawyer. I don't charge by the hour. It's just flat fee. Why was my business partner taught me long ago, we're there at takeoff and we're there for landing, so uh absolutely. My business partner taught me long ago, we're there at takeoff and we're there for landing, so absolutely.
All right, speaking of kids and activities, I know you got to get your daughter's Christmas concert, so we'll let you go.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, thank you.
Right, next on the agenda, community task force report and recommendations.
Hi, everybody, good evening. Ben Jerry with Lark Techs. Well, as you heard Peter talk about, the need is critically important. And so this task force really spent the better part of fourteen hours discussing needs. And so we'll walk you through kind of a summary of those discussions. I think we might have a couple that are going to speak, come up to speak here tonight, too, as well. So here's our agenda, we'll run through the task force meetings and our criteria. We'll talk about the recommendation survey, we'll be able to skip that. I think you'll go through the second time tonight, but I did highlight some of the slides from the survey results as well. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So here is a list of our task force, again, we met seven times. Seven times. Oh, I forgot, gave us a charge statement, so you can see we talked about educational programming, staff compensation, other facility needs. How, I don't know, we address them, what might be the financial implications. And a report here summarizing the findings. And then hopefully engage them and continue to be key communicators. Again, we had seven meetings, each for about two hours, so about, like I said, fourteen hours worth of discussion. And this is the process we went through. The red bubble really represents the community task force. We could see different pieces of input going into that red bubble, so they studied lots of different pieces about the school district. And then we kind of stopped for a second, talked about the need, made sure we agreed on the needs, before we really looked at what, how might we solve those. Some of the things they studied and discussed, physical conditions. So we talked about maintenance, deferred maintenance, and really to highlight, there was, there was some original HVAC equipment that really is difficult to maintain, hard to get parts for. And it's on Greg's list as being kind of a high need to be replaced. And it's primarily at the preschool and middle school. I'd say at the moment, so we looked at size of your buildings, how many students they might hold. It looks like secondary buildings are going to have capacity, especially middle, middle school building has capacity, high school has capacity. And some of that's depending around how you might schedule your day and everything like that, but it looks like there's capacity based on your projections. Because the moment is really strictly relatively stable, and that was a summary report that the board received from the department for high school. So we reviewed that report. On safety, security and technology, talking lots of discussions. We talked about some of our technology systems are just really reaching into their life. Or maybe don't have all the functionality that might be desired. And really, there's not a viable funding source for it. And so it's kind of a constant that will maintain and operate and replace those systems. So cameras, one of those classroom technologies, another couple pieces that are maybe missing from your facility, we've discussed cellular signal boosters, so that that's a booster that goes to the building that cellular signals. And again, that's, we're seeing that going more in our schools now for both safety and communication needs. The middle school doesn't have a general facility to use, so it's only going without. And then parking, it was quite a discussion around just the challenges or the quantity of parking, where people need to park, how events happen. And really having that kind of one point of ingress and egress to the campus is a challenge, especially during emergencies. Curriculum, I spent a lot of time discussing current technical education spaces of shops. Or the tech spaces, everybody calls them something a little different. That was one of maybe the earliest things, the task force went down through all the spaces. And really, the finding was, they're just really undersized for the programs. And there are also maybe some discrepancies, and so that would be better to enhance the program. On the virtual school, they currently currently house the school store. So they would benefit from more permanent location, including entry and exit to certain those students. And then 4K programming, that was another large discussion that the task force took on. We toured both sites where 4K is going on. And I heard quite a bit from your staff about the benefits of the located world rough. On the special education side of the middle school, we talked a little bit about that, there's kind of foreseen, foreseen that there are some students coming with some needs, that some of the services could be enhanced, if some of the support facilities could be enhanced. So things like a shower, proper changing area, et cetera. And salary was also talked about, current budgeting is what you've been doing, as you all know, about two percent a year. How you've been operating. And that rate is really, doesn't allow you to stay on pace when you compare to other districts. Especially then, that becomes more apparent, especially to staff who experience this. And then activities, track and field has challenges with drainage, it's starting to deteriorate on the track. Also being kind of almost a point one playable, depending on weather, depending on the light, how the field's taking on water. There's been examples of rescheduling happening already, and it's projected to continue. I guess a few other items there, as well as storage, et cetera, we'll talk about more about that. So this is the criteria that the task force worked on, again, really highlighting the top needs. I'll pause here, and if there's anybody, anyone from the task force wants to talk about it.
Let me just take it right down the list, bullet item by bullet item, so if I, Greg, you'd be up first.
Yeah, thank you. We really need to address some of the things here. At the middle school, we have automation system that was originally Johnson Controls of Menaces. And then Train came in, they added some computer stuff to that, and then you will lay some stuff on top of that for a computer system. And really, the Johnson Control, if we don't do something with that, the whole thing is going to collapse. And we'll be cold there, or really not, it's almost like. They're not, the Menaces stuff is no longer supported by the manufacturing, and so we need to do something there. Our middle school has an air conditioner, or has an air handling unit number ten, which is past its life cycle. It runs the gym unit, and that gym is used very often, summers, winters, all the time. The piping is very old, it's from nineteen eighty. So it's hard to get belts to move anymore. Whether any of them break anymore, we've got an issue there too. So that unit should actually be, it's housed in a room, it's in a and it needs to be on the roof, directly on the roof, so we can use that to a better service. Heating and cooling zones at the middle school. You've got one thermostat working three rooms, so the third, two rooms on the outside, they got to go with what's according to the middle room. Some teachers want seventy-two degree air. The one in the middle might be seventy degree air, so it may be a little bit chilly in those other two rooms. The high school, we have an automation system. It's originally Barbara Coleman, and that was in a DOS system. DOS is very old, and didn't anything for it at the once. And we have fuel on top of that, which said if something should happen to DOS, there again, we're in trouble. High school has some original air handling units that on the outside are very little air, and are difficult to make to attention in cold weather. The unit number ten thing is branched out to the office. That is very, very real air movement by the time it gets to the office. The unit actually sits back in the back of the library in a mezzanine. So the air has to travel all the way from the back of the library to the office. And by the time you get done, you got a vent that's about that big. That's just not adequate. Then I'm getting the airflow, AC or heat. And I saw some fan coils in the air handles in the locker rooms that are not working at this time. We need to have three doors that pass the life cycle. So I think mostly this will be a positive impact, all of these will help greatly in a, in a matter of no time, if we had some new stuff, I'll put those systems through. Elementary is in pretty good shape, need a few sensors on these to help. I have Terry Freeze on the line, I don't know if he's available, Terry?
I just unmuted, I, I'm not used to this version of software, can you hear me, Greg? Okay, I just want to add a couple of things, and I'm going to start at the middle school. We have them multiple zones, multiple classrooms, excuse me, on on one thermostat and served by one ventilation box. And it's really hard to manage indoor air based on occupancy, when you've got multiple rooms. It's, especially with the pandemic stuff that we've got going on now. It's difficult for Greg and his staff to see what's going on in the, you know, like he said, with one teacher wants a temperature set point, you know, it doesn't work in the other space, and, and it's, it's it worked back when they did it, but times have changed. And I, I think that's a very good improvement. And overall, that system at the middle school is, that's antiquated. It's, it's old technology, there's no supporting software for the Menaces controllers anymore. In fact, I'm not even sure we can buy them. I think what we've ended up doing is putting Band-Aids on it, and one of these days, that that's going to be, we're going to run out of a box of Band-Aids, is what's going to happen. And then we also need to consider that them same systems do control the heating systems. You know, cooling, we can probably suffice without, but in the wintertime, if some of them components fail, they're, they're hard to get. And it's hard to get that stuff to run. You know, if you've ever got to babysit it all the time, so that, that's certainly a concern there. In the high school, Greg was talking about the air handling units and some of the control systems. And when this whole pandemic thing started, and it's ongoing, and in my opinion, that's going to be with us for some time to come, the way it looks. Again, with the systems that he has available, without some software upgrades and component upgrades, it's tough to control the outdoor air settings, the damper settings. I worked with Greg a lot on this to get things working correctly, so we could we could get the school ready for the pandemic a year ago, or whenever that was. But again, I don't have a high confidence level in how that whole system is working. It's nineteen nineties or earlier technology, some of that stuff is probably earlier than that, so just nothing available for it anymore. Did you have anything else you wanted me to add, Greg?
No, no, just, thank you.
Oh, you're back.
Maybe Greg briefly just explain Terry and his role, and how he's helped us.
Terry is the he's just kind of a sideline guy that I can call. He looks into our system, has access to the system. He's worked with us on several different projects, focus on energy, fuel. And he's really helped a lot. He sometimes will diagnose things that says fuel needs to be the company to call, or
Terry, what's your background, Terry?
Well, I've been in, I've been in this business for about forty-plus years. I was chief engineer at the hospital in St. Cloud, Minnesota. Then I ended up working for the University of Minnesota in their Energy Efficiency Department. I worked for McKinstry. I got involved with St. Croix Central after your fire. I believe that was in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen. From a commissioning standpoint, and, and kind of an ongoing service to Greg and, and his staff, as far as problematic, helping him shoot problems. So I was with McKinstry for quite a few years, and then I did retire, I'm semi-retired now, and I still, I do some commissioning work for some other firms, and I do some extensive work for, for St. Croix Central. So each, Greg and I talk several times a month, when he's got a problem, I've got access to the control system and remotely. And I can look at it, and I help walk him through the pandemic stuff, and Greg's got a lot on his plate there, and, and he's got so many different versions of installations. It's hard to keep, keep track of all that stuff, so that's, that's how I kind of fit in the whole role, so.
Thank you, Terry.
You bet.
Next to CT, I think Austin was originally going to present, but when they got rescheduled. So if there's somebody else.
Renee, I'm, I've been in the district for thirty-five years, but my family that I'm here in here, I think, has been lifers here in Central, so here, third generation's going through school here. I, I'm going to represent first, CT, I'm Information Technology Director at Washington County. So to me, anything that we can do to help our kids prepare for technology, or trades, or cooking, or the capability for any career is super important. Right now, I can't hire people, and I'm looking to go down to college level, and I honestly, I'll take a really smart high school kid to do the work that we need to do. And I'm in the public sector, so anybody that we can bring in is very important. Walking through those facilities, I asked my son, both my sons had gone through this. Do you think that we've made any changes in the room after I described it? And he said, I don't think, I think they're the same mom, and both of them have been out of school for, oh, fifteen years or so. So to me, it's really important, as a person that's going to hire quality students, that we really need to make a difference in those rooms, and get them to the level where kids can learn. I'm worried about an accident, I'm worried about that the cramping in there is going to make it an issue, not only for learning, but maybe an accident, and I think that that is something that needs to be looked at. If a student, a parent would walk through there, it's very evident that it does need to be expanded. And that learning environment needs to be there for these kids. I'm also going to talk about the 4K, having that I have six grandchildren, I have two more to come through that program. It's been phenomenal, I loved it, they learned a lot, and got the It's been phenomenal. I loved it. They learned a lot and got the edge that they needed to go into school. What I worry about after hearing the teachers and visiting the school and seeing how Trinity is, a lot of red flags took me into the committee that we talked about. The capability of kids getting the same access to counselors, to the nurses, to just administration is super important. Will that help them on academic scale? Absolutely, because they're going to give the equity and the care as every other 4K student if they're all together on here. Trinity is a wonderful place, great short term solution, but we really need to look forward. And as we talked as a committee, we really need to support the teachers that are teaching these 4K kids that need the support of the full staff as everybody else. So I did want to just push that through. And I want to thank the committee because we did a lot of great discussion on both those areas. And I wanted to just talk to you about that a little bit tonight. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Brad Wester was going to talk about stadium maintenance. Okay.
So Brad, Brad actually said he wasn't going to be here, so I got to know some quick. In addition to the CTE stuff, I wanted to to share a story. I'm actually with a kid today, kind of appropriate timing. The student's struggling in a couple of his left classes and I said, the student, why? Why are you in those classes? He said, I didn't want him in the first place, Mr. Johnson. And he said, well, it makes sense that you're struggling if you don't even want to be there. I said, what were your choices? And he said metals and small engines. But he couldn't get into metals or small engines because their section sizes are so small. So here's a student who wants to be in the trades, wants to be in those classes, and he can't do it because of our space. And that's pretty unfortunate. So twofold problem. One, we got a kid who's unengaged in two. He can't get the training that he wants. So pretty critical. I decided I'm going to stop calling it a stadium. It's now the older educational and athletic facility center, just to make some words there. But I think when we call it a stadium, it gives people the wrong impression that it's for athletics only. We we use that space for FIDE or band. Obviously, all of our activities are athletics. We also have outside groups come there. We have a drone Bubacor there. We have Relay for Life uses their space. So I'll start, I guess, with the track. It's a Band-Aid. So we we either can fix the track through the referendum or we're going to have to find the funding to fix the track anyway. It's it can't be it can't be utilized and it can't be pushed anymore than it currently is because it's in a state right now that's basically disrepaired. This spring, we won't be able to use lane one because that's where the water sits and all the rubber, all the rubber pellets are falling off. Kind of showed on the tour. And and that track, and we talked about there's only two varsity track meets that we that we currently host there. We host the middle school meet there. We also use it for summertime, spring and fall strength and conditioning. Our country team uses it. And like I said, the Relay for Life uses it. Our cheer team performs in that during football games. And the Drum and Bubacor used it last time. So it's not it's not an if we redo the track. It's a when and how we fund it is either with referendum monies or we scrape together from somewhere else. So that's the track. The field, when you see the field, the subsoil and the way it drains is completely inadequate. We've got manhole or sewer covers basically in the ditches alongside the field, which creates a bit of a hazard. There's been some sinkholes there. It holds water. Last year, we moved two varsity football games off of the field. And when we only host five football games there, losing two on your own field hurts a little bit. This year, we had to move a C team game and the JV game off of that field. We can't play soccer, so we recently added soccer. Last year was our first season. We added soccer. We can't host a soccer game on that field. One, it's too small. Two, the crown is so steep. And you might remember the numbers you had for the what the crown specs are, but a soccer ball, if you kick it, would just roll off to the side. We wouldn't we wouldn't get a good roll for a soccer ball on that on that field. It the the field and the drainage and the mowing and the painting, limited ability, use that field for FIDE. It's the the grass and the mud it gets trapped in is a housekeeping issue. The painting, the mowing, the irrigation is the grounds issue. So redoing the field, fixing the crown, putting the turf on, eliminate some of those, all those problems. Like, as I said earlier, you know, we currently have four to five varsity football games on that field a year and then four to five CN JV games for football. We host our varsity soccer programs. They play their games at the middle school football field. So we have a transportation issue in getting soccer players from high school to there. And they practice in robots. So we've got high school kids driving themselves. We have a bus available, but high school kids choose to drive. They drive themselves to practice and they drive themselves to games. When you think about the equity piece for our soccer players, they don't have access to a locker room. They don't have access to the trainer at their at their current locations. And they don't really get that home crowd feel in the play at their high school. Just try to take it with my notes here. Soccer games, so we talk about four or five football games. Soccer, both boys and girls play a twenty four game season. That is about twelve home games, so that would add an additional twelve boys and twelve girls games, so an additional twenty four events. And if our teams get bigger, obviously, we can add JV games there. And I don't think a grass field would, I don't think a grass field will, our current grass field would not hold up to that amount of use. In addition, in our outdoor spaces, need a little bleacher work on the home side and the away side. Our current away bleachers, I don't think are are up to par, up to code. So those are something we'll say.
Thank you.
Questions?
Next, I believe Nat Shala is going to talk about the investment in our staff.
So hello, I'm Nat Shala, past graduate of Central and also a current mom of kids within the district. And I just wanted to touch for a minute on the needs for staffing within the potential referendum. The notes due to what Josh said originally, that really got my attention for staffing was that it's in our mission to have above average expectations, which teachers are part of. But we are paying them below average when we look at their benefit salary compensation together. Doesn't seem fair, definitely not a good long term solution. So understanding a little more of what goes into teacher pay, it seems critical that we take the teacher salary component into the referendum when we are competitive compared to neighboring districts. The best facilities in the world won't teach our kids unless we have the proper people in place. And it really isn't a question, contrary to some of the discussion we saw last spring, of whether or not teachers are overpaid. The question becomes, where do they get the most value for their time spent? Is it within our district or is it in the neighboring districts? We're already facing staffing shortages. There are signs, all the signs display them all the time. As long as not having enough substitutes to go around and even to always have kids in session in light of the pandemic. So it's just, it isn't the question of whether or not they're overpaid and that's the required communication to get across. The last thing I wanted to state is, well, our task force was in a hundred percent agreement. Everything listed here was in need. And I don't know, maybe with the grant needs to have changed. There was some concern over a tax increase. And although it may be a small minority of our population, as we saw in the survey, I feel that small minority can be a very loud voice. And I do just want to state it might be something to consider because I would hate to see none of the needs addressed because there's an increase listed on the proposal because people won't be beyond that. But everything was a need. It is a need and it's very valid.
Thank you. Lastly, chat, technology?
Well, we can add proposed technology projects. We're looking at updating the classroom displays. Finding that with their age and the fact that they're used every day, installed, that they are starting to see weird glitches in all functions, which causes interruptions to instruction during the day. We're also seeing a degree of picture quality and brightness after we replace a bulb, which makes it harder for those students to see. The televisions that have a much longer life cycle and a much better picture and brighter picture. We're going to update the gym audio at the elementary and middle school. Those systems are very old. We've seen all of the old functions and those. We'd also like to add voice amplification for those teachers. Those areas are used every day for instance. We would like to expand the visual signaling with them. Providing the buildings need to be more flexible with their schedules during the day and schedules with their events. And that's a very good way to communicate those changes. They could have, you know, different things playing all day and always and notify the students. We would also like to update the security camera systems. Won't go too much into detail on what's going on with those for elementary, but we'd like to add add some cameras and also give the ability for outside people to view that. Let's hear the right now viewing the camera from outside is very cumbersome. Takes a while. They have updated systems now that make it much easier for law enforcement or maintenance or administration to go from the outside. We would also like to we're also finding that our needs for the security of cameras have changed from just recalling previous events to more now we apply monitoring or I've seen how you have to fire students in the area, that kind of thing. And we'd like to add so much to areas of the buildings, the comments areas of the gyms. And that's a safety that would be cities and medical emergency comments area, you know, right now, someone's there assisting students. That person, they would have like reading messages back and forth to either as close as telephone or what have you. Just because we don't have to sit for a film.
Thank you.
Okay, again, I think I think it's really, really important that really what you heard is really about the needs, right? As you heard in the survey results, it's going to be critical to communicate those. And we spent a lot of time on that. And that list that we went through there really represents kind of the needs that rose to the top. Because as mentioned, there was there was a lot of discussion about tax dollars and squeezing taxes, what kind of tax might this have? And the task force was sensitive. And so there are some other items that were discussed. And then maybe fell a little bit lower on the priorities. Activities, there's other things discussed, training facilities, support areas, storage areas, things like that. Should continue to be part of maybe a future plan. And if your enrollment is increases, particularly at the elementary school, there may be some discussions around what that would look like. I think the projection shows within the near term, you're not going to see huge shifts in the movement there. But it could happen. There are there are things happening development wise in the community. So it's something to continually monitor. And and then we sort of talked a little bit about in this, it does factor in the grant application. And so you can see all the items here broken down. So we were previously discussing just shy of thirty two million. And with that grant application, it knocks it right down into the thirty million dollar price. Which is really good. And what that means is, I think, the next one and the seller here as well, I think I have the bigger slide next. So we have we have a report from your financial consultant there that thirty million dollars is a million effective zero dollars. Those thirty two million was eight cents. And we did start to think about we have to know that what we're talking about is feasible, right? Can you fit it? Is there enough space? So this is really just called the diagram. And it really don't intend them to represent the final design. In fact, most of the time these will evolve quite a bit as more and more inputs given into the design. So this hasn't gone through a design process. It doesn't have stable engagement. All that would happen if a referendum is successful. But we wanted to make sure if to go for a referendum, if you're on that site. And so this is an example that shows a four D vision could fit in that northwest corner. But there might be other spots where it could fit as well. So it is feasible. And same with CTE space. So this one shows an addition on the, I guess, like the southwest, southwest corner. Wrapping the auditorium to see, again, is it feasible? Can you fit it in the stage? And what do you guys want to have? We can see that it fits. Again, it hasn't gone through the design process. And there may be another location, some questions as we go through. I won't cover anything on the survey, all of that. Maybe just on that last slide. So November was really wrapping up the task force and the survey was occurring, which brings us really to that red bar there, which is school board discussion. So that's really kind of the base forever right now. And most of it has been made at this point. So if you were to go for a April election, January twenty fifth, twenty fifth resolution. So some time for discussion if needed. And then once the board makes a decision and assuming you would assume go for a referendum, it really turns to campaign activity. And that's really important as you're you're highlighting in his presentation. Really communicate the need. And so there's just several ways up there, different strategies we've seen on communicating the need. That both us, Martin and Johnson and Peters, you heard, will all help contribute on the district through their campaign. Any questions? Very sad to call the task board meeting.
What's good, you know, one one, so I think significant change between the last referendum and this one. The excess levy was recognition that some of that money could be used for technology. That if if we made a mistake on teacher compensation, we didn't need it all. First of all, we don't have the levy at all. But there's also, because right now, you know, we bought smart boards ten years ago. And we have no money in the budget to upgrade or replace. It's like if we do one a year, you know, take the rest of life. So I thought that was a really good addition from the task group to recognize that some ongoing technology money could be helpful. So I thought that was really good. Input from the task.
Yeah, I would hope so. I didn't say, but I will clarify that previous last April was about a hundred and five percent on the average. And the model that the task force discussed here was using hundred percent. So that also is another change that helps bring that middle grade impact out.
You have a question for us?
You speak to on the bond, the kind of sensitivity to inflation and supply chain. I know that you have a lot of factors in there, bunch of factors to make sure that we can get what we promise for the money we've asked for. get what we promise for the money we've asked for.
Yes, um, so Martin Johnson, I got Peter tonight, but um, I'm a construction manager. Um, uh, they, they're doing projects every day, especially in this region. And are seeing kind of impacts on both inflation and supply chain. And they factor that into the budgets here, there was a line item, um, at the bottom of the list that was kind of, we call it project cost. So there's, it's really kind of two buckets, um, for, I mean, just the first is the cost that you need to pay a non-director to come do the work. So, lay the bricks, put in the steel, run the HVAC, that's one of the costs. Um, the other is that project stock cost, so that um, is really kind of all inclusive, but a big component of that, um, uh, we have a called contingency here. As opposed, and you, your terms are a little higher, you're always contingency, but uh, there is a contingency put in. Really the uh, comes with a bunch of different things, so uh, the first is installation. Uh, we're predicting, I know, we know you're not going out, uh, and gonna try to bid projects today. You know, what's gonna happen in the future, we have to try to predict where escalation is gonna go. So Martin Johnson factored that in, um, and then they also factor in construction contingency. And that is because these projects aren't designed, right? We don't exactly know, um, what we're going to do when we open up the wall, et cetera. So, um, they also factor in here that you will add as well. Um, and then, um, you know, these are gonna be, because these are additions, um, you are kind of funded buildings, there's always a surprise. Order to be surprised in the dirt, and so that's what we're following practice. So, uh, they have factored in um, an average contingencies that they see on, on their projects to make sure, to make sure the projects are successful.
Well, again, I just want to thank the task force and the time and thought, discussion that happened truly was a cross-section of our community. Lots of meaningful discussion and I think really pleased with the spot we got here uh, today. So it honestly uh, worked out great. But, I mean, the timeline, everything, we're, we're right on track, so thank you very much. Um, one other person I want to mention, Tom Griggs is with us as well. And Tom, maybe just introduce yourself and your role uh, in, in, in all of this. I think you're on mute, Tom. It'd be the bottom left, that little microphone, or bottom center, I guess, would be your mute button. If you'd be right, you can see my screen, this button here. Well, I'll do my best, uh, so Tom is, uh, we've worked with Tom in the past in a referendum and our bond council, so to speak, but it's not just the bond. Uh, Tom is legal counsel that specializes in this, so he's the one that helps us develop the exact language. So he needs to understand the scope of these projects so he can write the actual resolution that the board would approve and that exact wording is what goes on the ballot. So it has to be general enough, you know, to allow for some, you know, contingencies and unexpected things. But it has to be specific enough to be, you know, informative so that folks know what they're voting on and legally are doing what we say we're going to do. Did I, did I do that?
There I go, I, you know, I've um, had a little trouble finding the microphone, but I finally got it on. Um, no, Tim, I think you explained it fairly well. Um, I think the, you know, the task, uh, immediate task ahead for us on this end. Uh, you know, depending on what the board decides here is that ultimately, uh, if they choose to go to referendum. Uh, we'll be preparing uh, an initial resolution on the bond side. And what we call the revenue cap resolution on the operational side. And uh, i- in both of those resolutions. We try to capture the essential elements on the bond side of the projects that are going to be undertaken. And uh, and then on the operational revenue cap side, again capturing, you know, the essential elements of, of what that revenue cap relief uh, will be directed toward. And um, uh, being able to sit in and listen to the presentations tonight. Um, as well as uh, you know, reviewing the community survey information. Uh, will give us, you know, a, a good information to be able to come up with uh, that purpose language for both of those resolutions that uh, the board would ultimately be taking up uh, sometime in January. So, uh, that's, that's the role that we immediately play. And then as we work through the uh, uh, up to the referendum. Uh, you know, we assist the administration in making sure that um, whatever filings are needed at the state level with the DPI, uh, election notices being published. We work with the administration to make sure that we're hitting all those timelines and deadlines and publications that need to be met. And then responding to any other questions that might come up during the course of the referendum. So that's a sort of a synopsis of the role that we play.
Well, do you know, do you recall how long you've helped Sacred Central? As long as I've been.
Many, many years, I, I would uh, uh, venture a guess and say at least fifteen or twenty years.
Oh, yeah, I think it's more.
Yes, probably more.
No, you've done a great job advising the district over the years, so I think a lot of our fiscal disciplines and prudence has been benefited from your sound advice on uh, referendum planning and the resolutions that we've passed, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right.
Good?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome to leave, but I especially would ask to stick around for this next part, it's really good news.
Yeah, it's a good news, yeah, you don't have a Eagle Scout project to check off a merit badge. Well, this is good, this is gonna be good stuff here.
I'm gonna stop presenting if you could, um. But I mean, to the recording is the only thing I'm thinking of. That would be helpful. Is it just the folks in the room would be able to see this otherwise? Um, would you mind sharing that with me, if you have it, I could share with me and then I could present that, that would work well. So, do I give you? Oh, you're good, I can present then to uh, the meat, you know, so it's on the recording. All right, I think we're ready. You good at the microphone?
Yes, okay. So we can celebrate our district reporter, if you haven't put it already, it's outstanding, outstanding. We'll do some more detail with it and put it in context for perspective, we'll do one method. The value to it, but it's not what's bad. We'll speak to that here, you have a few documents that I'll, I'll reference. It's a local source of pride now, right? I think that's, most communities would say that, but I think ours especially. Um, it's our school, there's no doubt about it, that Hammond and Roberts both have a lot of capability. We want to be known with our children, with our district community members, and that's. When you walk into our building, you can see accomplishments all over the walls, even here. Like we have accomplishments from previous report cards listed, it's because of that pride. There's two factors that build that pride and of course, first and foremost, it's the students. They continue to demonstrate strong character through their actions and words. Their success is evident in the arts, they've done just some recent concerts or plays, it's just amazing what they do. Our athletics continue to be outstanding in the academics, which we're gonna speak about tonight. This is during their entire four K twelve experience. And of course, most importantly, when they leave the district and what they do, whether it's here or elsewhere. And of course, that couldn't be done without the staff. Every one of the staff members plays a critical role, they display that effort daily to help our child, to help our, every child feel valued. And sensible on to achieve success in different forms. And to be prepared with exceptional character, knowledge and skills when they graduate to take athletic sports, strong vision and mission. That's what we try to do every day, I'm confident standing up here and saying that our staff do that. And continue to show up every day despite the challenges that will be tenfold in the last year and a half. Of course, here's the report card, right? Well, the report card has been around since two thousand and eleven, twelve, but in two years where we haven't had report cards, fourteen, fifteen, of course, in nineteen twenty. There's weighted to calculate overall score, there's four priority areas which we'll walk through. And it's all based on those consistence assessments. There is many, many sources of information at the DPI websites, if you want to go more in depth, I understand, I'm looking for time to close tonight. But I wanted to speak to again, the perspective and context. I'm beginning to do something that we help build is a, is a document of commitments. And our board commitments speak to, one that stood out to me, um, committee to fellow board members to support the mission of the district. And embrace the vision, looking out the windshield and minimize looking out the rearview mirror. What that means is we're about to look out the rearview mirror and celebrate that. But it's not our main focus, it's looking forward to continuing to improve. We're in a business where continued improvement is necessary, not because we're failing, we're struggling, but because we can always be better. And we can serve those that we're serving better, I think that's really important to share. I, I don't know, Tim, maybe you can share, what year was it uh, created the goal to be the top ten report card? Thirteen, fourteen, sorry, your tenure?
No, it was after that, probably about um, six, sixteen or seventeen. It may have been accepted for three or four years and went just one way, probably a year to now.
A few years ago, we stopped talking about that for the right reasons, but the process hasn't stopped. I think that's really important, the focusing on the process to achieve that goal is not ending. But we've eliminated that cloud or that, that fear of not achieving a pretty lofty goal. When you think about the number of school districts in state of Wisconsin and us in great northwest Wisconsin trying to achieve being the top ten district. As well, it goes along with, I think, something that's really relevant and been in communication with, with some other district leaders is um, one of the lucky bucks recently has some success, right? Their star Yanis, I wouldn't try to say his last name, but he's been revered not only for his play, but his perspective is matured. In one of his quotes, um, spoke to how the past is about your ego, how the future is about pride. Living in the present is about being humble, continuing to get better. I truly believe that as a team, these individuals behind me and the staff out there. We live humbly because we know we can continue to serve better. But we've taken off a lot of pride in the success that we've had, you know, we've been built. I think again, it's really important as we continue through this report to understand um, what we're doing right now, today in school, last week, um, fully continues to build the success. So the report card, the report card purpose has a couple of different things, it's public, right? It's to show, there's a, there's a form of accountability with that, a comparison. But it's uh, it's to identify areas of strength and to build upon, scale up on those. And then as well, pinpoint areas that we can improve upon. It's specific data based on standardized assessments that does provide some help. It's the rider demographics, graduation rates, attendance, value added growth, which I'll explain, and achievement results from four different tests. Grades three through eleven, take the forward exam. Nine and ten, take Aspire, our eleven graders take the ACT. And then DLM is for one percent of our population, most, most significant disabilities. Um, it's a different example, we still are, of course, accountable to preparing them for what they need within the uh, buildings. So here we go, here is our, our score, eighty-one point, it exceeds expectations, it's just below significantly exceeding expectations. The scale is the same, however, this report card, these banners represent a slightly different report card. It has been reconstructed for the last two years, appropriately, so we'll walk through some of very, very similar, but there are differences. I'll walk through how the weights are also determined, as you can see, they're just a little bit different between achieving and growth. But this is outstanding, this is really outstanding, um, and I'm gonna share some comparisons in a moment. And why are comparisons okay to look at? Because first of all, this is a public report, it's representing what we do. That is the document that I did share with you here, the spreadsheet, I will post it on here, it's very small and hard to see. But I will represent, represent some of the highlights. So our fourth out of thirty-nine CECL schools. We're focused on the twelve benchmarked CECL districts. What that means is that it's regarding um, how we derive what our staff should be paid if a refunding were to be passed. These are the districts we compete for staff with. We found our twenty-fifth, Wisconsin, out of our four A twelve school districts. That's again, something to celebrate and continue to focus on the process. Most recently, we did have a report card last year, but two years ago, we were eighty-sixth in the state. Prior to that, one-twentieth, one-twenty-four, I can't remember exactly, so we continue to rise. And that's again, um, the individuals in the classroom and the front line, uh, they're the ones that deserve the credit. Our second Wisconsin school district with enrollment, similar eyes, similar to ours, it took a little bigger range. Worked approximately sixteen hundred, um, in our buildings, uh, nineteen hundred with our charter. It's important to recognize that our charter um, is not included in the school districts we work for because we have such a high level of holders among, there's a cullage by anything over thirty percent, so it's not included. But I, I thought it was important to look at this, just to look at our range. Additionally, we're second in Wisconsin for our school districts with similar demographics. Meaning our economic disadvantage, special education, English as a, English as a second language, and our opener home percentage size. So again, it's enjoyable to look at that, we should celebrate that. Bearsings are okay because of this. When we want to perceive and speak to our district of Hammond and Roberts, uh, we want to maintain educational license. It's our highest priority. We have current and potential families that are deeply, that care deeply about what their children gain in the educational experience. Our staff invests hard, passion, time, resources of their own, in this profession. They care deeply about what they deliver. And this success validates those efforts, and in fact, it usually boosts continuous efforts to grow and sustain. I think it's fair to speak to, just three weeks ago, we had a family visit with one of our, our districts, looking to consider if they should go here. It wasn't anything about athletics or the arts, it was about social, emotional peace, how they're gonna fit in, and then the academic side. And they walked away after meeting with the administration and the teaching and the great old team they're gonna be with. Blown away and ready to bring their child here. After a few years in virtual or some other, some other experiences that they know their child is not being prepared. That's just one example, and that happens probably more often than I get to recognize. And that's, those, that's what's most important when it comes down to is that people are recognizing, because of the success we have, that this is a good place to be. Not only academically, more so about the social, emotional, I'll speak to that briefly too. So our priorities, you're probably aware of this as a, as a district. School board has certainly invested, we have four, school safety, student climate, adult culture and academic achievement. I'm here to speak to, of course, academic achievement, but I think it's worth speaking about school safety first and foremost. Because our priority is not academic child achievement, when I say not. If our students aren't valued and taken care of, feel welcome and belong, they aren't ready to learn. So we focus more on that social, emotional and, and, and taking care of them as individuals, along with our staff. Different trainings, different grants that we have, uh, we are able to spend a lot of time on ensuring that our students are present. And feel safe to take risks in their learning, to be accepted by their peers, so that they can achieve academics. And have one without the other. And I say that with almost And I say that with almost more pride tonight than our report card, is that we take care of our kids well beyond the academics. As well as the staff and focusing on what they need, so that they can be their best for our kids on a daily basis. John Handy is someone that we as an administrative team are very, very aware of. He's very big as an educational leader, and I think this is appropriate to share. With reports like this or any reports, too often we can look for failure and even fix it, whereas with both of the successes scaling. That's what we're doing as a district. We need to celebrate and validate on these efforts of over 250 points. And each day, each student is combined extension of all adults. Here's the real purpose for this report card. It's a temperature check, it's a snapshot of time. It's based on standardized assessments, which are informative, but in the end provides some dead data. There's some things we simply cannot use right now. Some of the students that are representative of the state have already graduated, but it can provide some information. But I think it's important to speak to what our staff are realizing they will. Affreciate is the best word I think to use it. It informs us with real-time collaborative decisions and how to best meet our students' achievement around our essential standards. What do we do? We have interim progress monitors that are used quarterly, things such as staff register star and those who are swiss in the district are probably heard of. Right, we get a feel for where are they at and what do we need to do to help them? We can build goals out of this and we monitor, and we can go to a small group, individual, or keep it within the classroom room. Our staff to really use that to, and daily we have formative measures taking place. Exit tickets, quizzes, journals, just some examples. Right, inform us right now, so we know what to do tomorrow, we're on the spot now, if our students are communicating with us or not. They're not going along the trail that we like. Like we have some assessments per unit, per chapter, and those give us, again, a picture of mastery or proficiency standards that we can look for. So let's dig in a little bit. As we get into the new report card, there are some changes and we shared that. There's a statement of caution, a statement of caution is to say to be careful with this data. Due to COVID eliminating three months of school two years ago, ask the county to announce of course what that changed and no tests, no assessments two years ago. Be cautious, cautionary data. It's technical design changes to make it easier to identify. I'll have a side-by-side that you can go through with that of previous report cards. There's a target group equity measure, that's taking away the language of old EDS. Of course, we still want to, with different student groups, but this is more appropriate, I'll walk through what that is. We have optional narrative statement, we chose to use our mission and vision, depending on St. Croix Central District. It is limited to 450 words, it's nice. Absenteeism score instead of deduction, and then course and program data, simply as information. So we can take a look at our different courses, our participation, prepare that to the state and look to grow in the hands. You have two handouts again that gives you kind of brief information, it's called the report card at a glance and the data at a glance. For your books from later on and your college score at the DPI website. And these are the two documents again that you have in your hands. Here we go, here is the previous report card. I stand here before you and remember presenting two years ago and three years ago, and that being a real struggle to understand how to even explain, let alone utilize. So ironic timing, maybe it was better that we didn't even have the testing two years ago because they were in the process of trying to figure out what would be the best to measure and to demonstrate. So you can see the side-by-side much clearer, much less focused on the score. Their intention with color use and trying to again, point out what's most valuable in the priority areas of that, and we'll walk through. So on the first page, it just walks through our demographics. Your district again, at the last year around 1500 or 1600 this year. The disabilities at this time last year again were over 12%, economically disadvantaged 21%, and English learners around 1%. Why that's important, why I show you that? If you're wondering why achievement is at 34% of our priority weight versus growth at 15, 16%, that's all based on economically disadvantaged. If that were, if that, if those quadrants were all to be exactly equal at 25%, economically disadvantaged would be up to be at 35%. Exactly. Anything above that, they start focusing more on growth. Because again, the perception is or the understanding is, if there's more people that are economically disadvantaged, that achievement may be lower, you focus on growth. I'm not the person that created, but I understand that there's a lot more smaller people there and they pay a work crew, that's what's important. How to norm this and make it valuable is again, 35% more. We're lower economically disadvantaged, thus our score is more affected on achievement on the spot when we take these assessments. This just shows our priority scores, so achievement, that's all based on group scale. As you can see, the gray bars below are compared to the state. Every one of our areas, we are greater than the state average, which, and for comparison's sake, is something to be proud of, but it's not that. End all be all. I think we would all say this, when we want every student walking out of their school prepared. Because we're not only going to be served by our students, districts from all around us and all the state of course will take care of us in one form or another. And we want every student to have the best chance. I just spoke to this already a little bit regarding how it's, the weighting calculator is used. Target groups require a minimum of 20 students, but that meant is that if we only had 15 students that were identified as special education students or disability, they would not give us information on that group because it might be too easy to identify individuals. So 20 is that base in terms of being able to avoid actually identifying people. Of course, we're very careful. We don't fall into that, we have a rebound, every student group above 20. So priority area number one is on achievement. What is this? Again, it's a level of knowledge and skills, a team compared against the state academic standard. Of course, our academic standards are derived from state standards, so this fits well. As you can see, we do very well in both mathematics and traditional arts as compared to districts. In fact, this helps, there is a decile graph provided. This district has score higher than 84% of the districts in the state with those two scores. So what is this buildup? This is not built solely of last year. It takes three years of testing to interaccount. So it's not just our kids last year tested three years, why, that's for stability reasons. And there is again, points associated per year, per level of world basic to advanced, and it's based on that forward the ACT and aspire. Any student again that is here, considered full academic here, and had been here for 90 days, so probably three to four months, they are then considered within the testing. They do break down this area for us into student groups, so we can really look at populations. And we can look at equity, right? Our groups all being served in a way that they need. If we have high ranges of achievement from one group to another, we know we need to really approach one very differently and look at why that may be happening. Priority area number two is all about growth. How rapidly are students gaining knowledge and skills from year to year? It's focusing on a piece of improvement in students' performance. Again, you can see we're doing really, really well, in particular math, grew at a very strong rate for growth in our district. That's how the graph shows, we're greater than or 87% of the school districts throughout the state in this particular area. I want to speak to growth and how it's measured though. So it's called value added growth, and what that means, our students, they took the score now two years ago. So this is different, typically it would be two year, I'm sorry, three years. It would be two years of the, a spring of 2019, they look at that, they predict what they should score then in 2020. But of course, we take it in 2020, so now they go 2021. And then based on that, if we, our students achieve that, what that is saying is that there's something in our district from a systems perspective or people perspective, that is actually helping students grow more than expected. So again, just a quick example, where a student X, all their demographics, they scored 600 on the AT19 assessment. So based on that, they're predicted to score 650 on their next assessment. They score above that, that means as a district, we provided more value for that student. They got more than predicted. I think you'll really appreciate this page. Now, those two vertical lines are representing peak average, meaning if students, our students were on average, they would be there. They're above average in every one of our student groups in terms of what they're getting at St. Croix Central. That speaks to the people leading in the classroom and outside of that classroom, the programs in place to support our kids. For instance, let's look at math at the bottom, not proficient last year. So what that means is in 2018, 19, we had a group of students that were not proficient in our assessments. Come now and take it last year, and they are way above what is expected from them being not proficient at that time. That means they grew way, way more than expected. Why? Because again, of our teams of people looking at data that's available and using that data and making decisions with our resources and programs and our people to support those kids, they deliver to grade level to prepare them to be successful there. And that's just one example. But these are the areas that we'll spend time on, in buildings and our staff will look at too. Hey, how can we be better with this group or with this group? But this is again, a great representation of how we are performing and succeeding in the school, so it's our goal. Our next group is our target group, our third priority area, and this is new. We need to think about this as a mini report card. So they took the bottom quartile of our students from 17, 18. So we weren't aware of this, right? This is a new part, so we had no control, we did not know based on our state assessment. Seven state assessments in 17, 18, our bottom quartile of the district, about 25%. Use that number and then they measured it against our success last year in these four criteria areas, achievement, growth, chronic absenteeism, graduation. And you might be saying, why is achievement so low? Well, that makes sense when you step back and think about it, it's our lowest quartile of group of students identified. And that does not mean a student group. It used to be focused on student groups like sped, EL, economically disadvantaged. Now it's got everybody in the same pot, and it might be from the student you least suspect, the student you might suspect, et cetera, and sitting at bottom based on these four areas. Just like our school district report card was built, now we have a mini report card within here to allow us to see how did we impact our actual bottom quartile. Again, take a look at this numbers, rated the 98% of the districts in the state in terms of how we impacted a bottom percent of our students without even knowing that. And what I mean by that is the leaders behind you and the staff, they know the students based on our daily, our yearly data. What I spoke to is our interim and progress monitoring and our formative data, they know the students that need the additional support. We didn't know that the focus coming in this report card was going to be on. But why is this important to have target groups, right? We can focus on students that are most in need, we can focus on again, on equity. Making sure that those individuals are getting what they need, their score stability, I spoke to that already. If we have a ill population that's at 17 one year and then 21 the next year, and back down to 16, now you're getting scores one year and not the next year, we can't go as trends and we can't move day. So you need a stability with that, and this helps build that. We can focus on continued improvement and there's multiple measures that helps afford them. So this is a page again, that really shows within our mini report card what we did. I think again, an area to really point out is if you look at the growth side, our target group is nearly growing at the same rate as our non-target group. As you see in ELA or as in math, has actually exceeded our non-target group, non-target group. And what does that mean? We are closing the gap because our students that are struggling the most are growing at a greater rate than our non-target group. Our students that are already achieving, it doesn't mean they don't continue to achieve and grow in that group. We are, we have grown students that have shown they're behind a grade level for whatever reason. They're ruined, it's something to be really proud of. As well as you see our graduation rate, 100%. If they come to St. Croix Central, or in whatever situation you're in, you've been here the whole life, come in. But a couple of years ago, they're quite efficient, we do what it takes to help them walk out of high school with a piece of paper. And they all know, it really opens a door, closes the door if you have that. So our target group files specifies who was in the target group, not who will be. It tells us about the outcomes and it does not predict outcomes, and it gives a historical trend, it does not identify future trends. We have to do that work, we need to dig into our forward and our different sets of data to determine who needs that extra support. But as I said, it's not just about the forward, it's about our vast data, our star data, what we're doing daily with kids. This is just one set of data. And our last area of course is on track to graduation. This is about any milestones that predict that our kids will graduate, graduate successfully, and it continues to do very, very well. The reason our graduation is not 100% in this, I just want to point that out, is because as you're aware, we do have students that can go to school beyond for four years. Particularly students with a disability who continue to stir. Unfortunately, they're considered part of a four-year cohort. So when they're not recorded as graduating with their four-year cohort, even though legally and rightfully so, they're in our district until 19 or 20 or 21, we take a hit in our report card, but once they graduate within that seven-year cohort, it comes back to support. So that's a misleading number, we do not ask students that are not graduating. Then lastly, again, just informational only, this is about our post-secondary preparation and the different areas that we're providing opportunity. Our advanced courses, things like advanced placement, again, way above state average, dual enrollment, meaning kids are earning credits for college while they're in a high school classroom outstanding. Industry recognized credentials, again, creative states still in our workplace learning. I look at this and I hear about the grants that we just got, CTE, I hear about potential referendum, and this excites me that this area can only grow. When we have state-of-the-art facilities and we have one opportunity, these areas can only grow. We continue to build partnerships with DLRF, CBT, C Northwoods, open businesses. More and more kids, as you heard Mr. Johnson speaking to, not getting what they want, will get what they want and even more, and will prepare our kids better when they leave, if they choose again, not to go to a four-year college and again, put away into the workforce or to the college choice, which is awesome. And then the arts course information. Just to provide more information, this is not going to our scores. Intentional. So again, our priorities, I think it's just really, really worth speaking to, a lot of celebration around academics. But we're so, how did that academic achievement even occur? It's by a culture of adults that know how to work really hard, work together, a climate where students feel good about the hours they belong. And school safety, that is not just about how to get out of the building for the fire, or where to go with the tornadoes, it's about the social, emotional, really taking care of them. So they're regulated, ready along, enjoy what they engage. I thought there was one thing that's worth pointing out with as well, is you read in the Walden Bulletin, Jim couldn't have said it better. Even though the whole piece was why interact on achievement, Jim brought it back to, we celebrate this, but our first priority is on that one, social, emotional. Kids aren't in a good place, they can't understand, make hundreds of decisions, vibrant decisions, I said, they don't make it just one. I think that was kind of an advert to him in really encapsulating what this district is doing and will continue to do as we continue to humbly improve. But that was a lot, and I really tried to condense, I apologize, it went longer than I think it was.
Yeah, it's great, but top 25, it's crazy. Then you look at the breakdown, which is like, it would be an eye turner, huh? Like, I was going through it and it's significant elements, there's obviously something different.
A lot of schools, a lot of schools that were behind are quite different in terms of, when they get their coalbookers or the whitefish pays or most of the schools that are down in that area, there's an awful lot of money and their percentages are quite different in terms of student groups. And I say that only as a, we're competing with those schools, that's really, we're competing with those states. That's really, we're competing with those types of schools that just have different, um, different opportunities and resources. That's where apples, apples sometimes isn't.
Nick, great report. Appreciate the pride in which you were presenting. And how do we make sure our teachers and the team feel that appreciation and acknowledgement for, this is a school we're in, like nothing to do with this. This is the people in the trenches that are working with kids every single day.
Yeah, it's a really good question. We've, in our own conversations, we've struggled with, it's one metric, and it's, and it's old, and how do we take that to our staff? There will always be questions, or how do we use it, or what's, is it really valuable compared to the data we get day to day, week to week, et cetera? Um, I think each building principal has used their own method to show me and walk you through that and explain what it means to a certain degree and how to try to, um, to put it in context or put it in perspective. Yes, it's outstanding, but what we have here is still continued challenges, and here is a goal, but we have more and better things to use with that. Certainly, we can open that up, maybe we can hold people up the second. Hey, that's good. Hope we don't want to lose all right. But I think again, our, our staff do deserve to be honored and celebrated.
In the, the, Dan, I just had one question on the line term that you had there in the growth. I, I just, the one that jumped out is me, economically advantaged or economically disadvantaged, um, that they're, they appear to be statistically the same, the growth. Um, is that what we saw in a lot of different areas? Because you can see in the news and a lot of different areas where it's, uh, there was a significant drop for disadvantaged, um, but it doesn't appear that we saw that at all in our district. So that, I was kind of looking for that, and it appears like we didn't have that in our district.
Yeah, based on what I've seen as well, I can speak to that, that it's, that it's not, yeah. I hope there's anything else again that that you want to speak to.
That is also what we've been shared, that, that it hasn't changed.
Yeah, it, it just, I mean, it's been all over the news and articles, like, there's a lot of stuff about that, and it's just, like, great work that we didn't see it. I don't know if it's just a lot of different things, or the fact that we gave technology to all of, everybody and made it available, so that, right, and others didn't step up and to the plate and do that, that, you know, we sent the jet packs home, all of that stuff, through the entire thing, and in school sessions that were like one-on-one and all of that, just the culmination of everything, but.
Not just that, I think the school is providing, but if you think about one of the learnable modules, so the efforts that are being forward, um, you know, technology jet and leaders, I know they've been in a lot of homes for the last year and a half to be present, provide, deliver, to bring in, to support. Yeah, I think there's a lot of little things that led to that. And not only is that group, again, being serving, it's every group, every student, I guess.
But yeah, I mean, I think it takes a village, and I mean, this truly was what it is. You, you say the board had nothing to do with it. Of course they did. You know, it starts with the school board, and the vision that you had even years ago with the one-to-one technology. You didn't, you didn't predict this, but you were forward-thinking, and we were set up perfectly with so many things for this pandemic, academically, socially, emotionally, adding staff, support staff with interventions, and psychologists, counselors, and assistant principals, and all that plays into that. I mean, I truly do make, you know, this is a thirty-thousand-foot view, but it, it is, it's micro decisions, microdosing positivity when a, you know, person, I am. And that's what happens, right? Because one facial expression, one word, one action, it could be positive or negative, totally build relationships or just destroy kids by one little look, even, you know, uh, I mean, it's, and our staff is supporting and building kids up daily. I mean, it truly is, um, remarkable, and that's, this, this wouldn't happen, the school board, administration, staff, the parents, community, all that support, and I don't think there could be more problem. But it's not by accident. We got to pat ourselves on the back. But like you said, it, it, uh, you know, celebrate, but we're still looking forward.
I'm going to give you my favorite Yanis quote, those, uh, I think it was one week later, yours, uh, be a star in your role. Right? That's everybody being a star in their role. Man, that's a good example, regardless of what their position is, um, the experiences for the kids the whole time, so. Good work.
Okay, great work with the staff, leaders, guys. And I step out of this role for a moment, step in the table, and my three kids, and it's just, you know, life also works here. And I will take education right into them as well. And if it wasn't meeting or exceeding their expectations, it's not hard to look elsewhere, right? And that's not even a thought on mine, as parents who are extremely fond of what our kids are getting. We see it, we feel it, and we don't want anything else. And I can only hope that along with what's currently happening, with the potential to do more, the community still sees the vision that we have, and adding what we can add and supporting what we already have, it can only get greater and greater based on that. And as Bobby said in here too, it's not about systems, it's not about programs, it's about the people. We combine what we have for people with systems and programs and facilities and stuff, great things can happen. I do echo what Tim said. I appreciate all of your support over the years, um, and going forward, supporting for the decisions needed.
Thank you. Great report. I still. I was, I was just gonna ask if we should, we need.
I'm only an hour forty-five, so.
It's not bad. People need a break for a couple of minutes. So, what are we?
Let's put it on mute.
Eight twenty-five, just to let people know.
You bet.
Eight twenty-five?
Seven minutes.
Okay.
When I try to keep the heat down during the day.
Alright, we're gonna reconvene.
Hi friends, how are you? And David's on the line, or he was.
Yep, I'm here, Rowdy.
That's awesome, that's great song. You know, I'm sitting here looking at the camera and I'm seeing the top of my head and thinking, I'm denial big time, I just need to accept it like Vince, Pete, David, Kurt. It's a moment and just, any advice, boys? Come on, homies.
They get the July Club, six dollars eighty cents per month, five razors, oh yeah.
She ever cut herself?
I think she did a cut.
Yes, he does.
Is all it said, all it's supposed to be?
I remember when he had hair, it was pretty ugly.
David, any advice?
Yeah, Mach 3.
Tonight, we do this.
Should we do that tonight?
Well, let's talk about accordingly, they will do accordingly. Oh my gosh, so, let me just ask it, friends, how you living? That's, that's the quote from one of my favorites, Rick Raisby, several have seen that video. Some of you may have not seen the video, but really, it's a, it's a question about how we live in day to day, and how are we interacting? I heard several references tonight from Nick, him, about time we've spent together. You know, one of them being those interactions we have, you know, charging the batteries of people or draining the batteries of people, remember that discussion, friends? Right, so the t-shirts?
T-shirts.
He did.
You wore it?
Yeah, this is the school. This is our first day of school with our entire student body. I wore it, maybe if big enough, they could see it. It's gonna be your focus start year this year, we taking that very forward right to our kids.
Yeah, so, hey, I'll pick on you guys, let's see. Do you want to explain what that is, so people that weren't there, right, know what that is? T-shirt, what's on the t-shirt?
The whole battery concept. Yeah, the hundred percent. And are you?
Just charging and draining, right?
And make sure that when that's charging it, not draining it. I have a t-shirt and I wore it the other day, and my son is in the middle of school, it's like, hey, he's like, Mr. Neusbaum had that shirt on today, and so then I had to explain it to them what it meant, so.
Okay, so, that was awesome.
Yeah.
But you didn't explain it. What does it mean? It means that when we are interacting with people every day, right? Every interaction we have, we either charging everybody's battery a little bit or draining a little bit. Same thing happens when people interact with us, right, Chance, you with me so far? If you weren't there, you're a great job following, right?
So, I just need to stand up for Josh, he did say that, right?
Oh, okay.
We're either charging it or we're draining it.
He did say it, yeah. It's, I'm so focused on these balls. So, anyway, so that's really the key, but what, when I threw it back at you, it was, what are we doing to other people? Are we draining or are we charging batteries at every interaction? And we talk about school culture, and we have talked about school culture all the time, right? You're trying to do something with pay to increase a certain culture, you know? Okay, really, school culture is not an event. It's every single interaction that we have with people, it's built over time. It's not an event, it's not a one-time event. We build it over time, and that's really the key to that. So, you want to ask how you're living? It's really a very holistic question. I hear humble tonight, I heard Nick talk about humility. And, boy, we spent some time talking about that when we were together, right? But that's just a word right now, it's the buzzword everybody's talking about. In fact, you met a colleague of mine, Denise, we were just asked her, poor author of book called, Humility is the New Smart. Okay, we were talking about teams and what that looks like. So, one thing that we say, we're humble, we want to be humble, it's another thing to actually live it, right? Live it, celebrate successes, like you just heard about. And also, you say it's time to look out the windshield, keep looking out the windshield, alright? Celebrate the rearview mirror a little bit, but that windshield's a bad, because those kids that are in third grade right now, they care about fourth grade. They don't care about second grade anymore. Right, so, that humility piece, you got it, that's why I love being with all of you, it's really contagious. And then when somebody gets so sideways, as we all do from time to time, that's what we have each other for, to kind of just back in with proper intention and purpose. So, it's not, I gotcha, it's I'm here for you. It's a big difference, right? With me? I'm a little sorry. Alright, let's just review our time together just a little bit. First of all, some of the activities, what were some of the activities we did? I'm gonna queue up David here just a second, but before that, I would love to, football game off firstly, go back to us. I'm just getting it started. Activities we did that you remember. Benny, what do you got?
We did, right, what we thought our quality of everybody was.
Remember the 26 questions, all of you did that, right? Well, both who were here did it, right? Okay, awesome, so, that was memorable, why is that memorable, by the way? You want to help out?
Learned stuff about each other that we probably wouldn't know otherwise.
How many still have that paper? Isn't that amazing? Pete doesn't have anymore, but everybody else has it.
So, I have it.
Okay, cool. Why do we queue up paper like that? Battery charging, right? And sometimes you pull it out of the old drawer, we look at it, and I, I told you then, I'll say it again, principals, do that with your staff, with staff here. Oh my gosh, did anybody do it? How'd it go? Pretty cool, right?
So, you take it out, right, and you always remember your line? I think it just always, like you said, for charges, but we have to do that for other people.
So true. That's so cool, that's really awesome. So, David, can you talk, are you with me, David?
Yeah.
Can you tell us about that piece of wood on the back wall back there?
Nope.
He wasn't pointing to me.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, basically, it's just, we have to be mindful of the things that we say and do, because, you know, the integrity of the board, pun intended, the integrity of the board depends on us acting appropriately and doing the right things. And basically, anytime that we're slipping a bit, maybe making decisions not in the best interest of the district or the kids, or, you know, talk about things outside of closed session, badmouth staff, anything like that, it eats away at the integrity of the board, or that board on the wall, it puts holes in it.
Very, very well said, boy, that was amazing, you guys really, you really have those reviews down well. Were you guys here for this? No. So, what we, what he just told us is exactly what happened, we actually had three drills, and we talked about scenarios that were real scenarios from Wisconsin and a little bit in Minnesota, I think it was 15 or 16, or whatever, we count the holes. And some issues were more severe than others, some were minor, would be a small bit, some were medium, would be medium-sized, but then some were obviously a little bit larger. Now, the example are things that would, would hurt our integrity of the board. One of them, of course, would be like being late for a meeting, we decided that would be a small one, remember that? And then we thought, well, okay, there was another one that had a board member using a credit card to buy a purse. Remember that? That was a big one, talking outside of closed session, that's a big one, right? So, that's, what we did, we went through all of those, we realized, oh my gosh. And sometimes we do stumble on certain things, but when we did, we signed that board, like David says, we agreed that we're gonna do our best to uphold the integrity of the school board, which is really awesome, because we're gonna fall once in a while, we're a crook short, we all do that. Thank you for this, by the way. That's, that's really a good visual there.
That was actually done two, two years ago, when we briefly, we talked about it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you did, yeah, you're not, you're not like, I'm sure that part, you didn't actually do that.
First of all, just, I'll pull, I got an email this morning from a board member saying, I got red pants, I'm gonna wear them, you wear them. So, follow instructions. Anything else you remember of our time together, friends?
I enjoyed the skits where you, we bragged about ourselves, and then you flipped the side and you had to brag about the other building. I thought that was really.
Yeah, and so, I want to change the word from brag to celebrate, okay? Because that's what, that's why we do that, that activity, because of the mentality of it, right? How, how'd that go? Because you're, by the way, oh, most of you are in that skit, you're gonna see a little bit of the video. What were your thoughts, speed on that activity? You had a little microphone, you were talking, we did those skits.
In the auditorium.
In, we weren't here. I'm not sure what's inside that. You were a big star, you had other stars.
I remember finishing last twice, and I wasn't very. The first one, I thought we nailed, and we got last. After that, it just, it's like a kid, I'm done, I'm done.
Wow, okay. Well, so, for the modeling part of this, we had, you know, it's tough decisions as, as I think judges, right? They went over time. But what was cool for me to see was our board members start talking about our schools, and they had to ask questions, that was, you had to work on the script, so to speak, right, together? And then coming together was so awesome, it didn't matter what your skill level was, talking in a microphone, you had fun with it, and that was really the best part of that. And then talking about those schools in a way that says, yeah, I'm really proud of what's happening here. You know, that's really cool stuff. By the way, see Nick, I should have picked on him, but it's ducking behind over there, so, but he was there as well.
A big part of that was breaking the rules, not supposed to be in the auditorium.
You just had to go there, didn't you? Thanks, yeah, so. Well, this is recorded, so I don't want to really throw you under the bus, but I got the school district in trouble, because we went to a, we went to a part of the facility we weren't supposed to go to, and I didn't really know that. And, and your superintendent totally fell on the sword for me, and I appreciate it. Showed very good character that day.
I have a lot of experience in claiming ignorance.
I'm just gonna ask for forgiveness.
Yeah.
Okay, so, David, thanks for that report. Let's watch this video if I did this.
Nick, next message.
Broadcasted, I think.
Tell me when you're ready.
Yeah, I'll just.
Are you ready? Just gonna play it, we'll play.
Oh, just a second, I was sorry, just a second.
That's too bad.
It'll, it'll, it'll have a song.
Students who don't fit into the freaking board will have an opportunity to still graduate from high school. We have really great staff, students, and our families are amazing too.
I work with kids who work for us, and can you work for us? I just like the size of it, how people are able to do a lot of things, a lot of different opportunities for the size of the school, and just very engaged, and the academics are stellar. Just trying to see if there's a board and see what we learn.
That makes the biggest mistakes, because a lot of times we don't focus enough on the positive things that are going on. And to hear us all too.
Why are you to Brown's Wisconsin Cypress Elementary School, where they have a unique approach to educating children?
It just is, and turns out the elementary school is fabulous.
Yes, we have a great middle school, and the other two buildings are really good, also.
They split off by taking the fifth graders off to the side, and eventually they allow them to build those relationships before they move on to the rest of the school.
I like another discussion, and I really like the letter that we got from, write, and also read. We have each other's back, and I think that always helps, kind of in a group where you say that you know that you have each other's back. Just getting to that, a lot of folks, and the people on the sidelines.
Also, we got to stay where each one of us is coming from, so we can maximize our effectiveness as a school board.
He likes to let us do all of the teaching to each other. His approach is really about relationships amongst ourselves. Kind of see what it takes to kind of be a team that works together, and I think you did a really good job of that.
Oh, there you go, that was a funny review, I forgot things that we forgot about that were in there. Remember Family Feud? It's kind of fun, right? Uh, good stuff, so now that you've seen this, you think back, everybody's smiling, right? I'm thinking, man, not only my bulb of the camera, I have like 50 pounds, I said the same thing. First, not for everybody, but just a couple of us. So, in, in front of you, and David, I just passed out the commitments, Kurt's not with us tonight, right?
Yes.
Oh, Kurt is too?
Yep.
Oh, cool, hi Kurt!
No, oh, I'm sorry, not Kirk, I said Kurt.
Nope, I saw Kurt was here, but no Kurt. So, yeah, I'm just gonna talk to the board just for a second. So, our commitment sheets, we have them in front of us, we're gonna read them again in just a second, so I'm gonna need somebody to read for Kurt again, for David, to get the parts. So, let's, let's go around the room here, we'll just kind of go and go in order. Vince, you wanna be the first one?
Not really.
Way to be the leader, my man, way to be the leader. Nice and loud.
With intention of being a great board member, I commit to being prepared for meetings and being engaged well in attendance.
Is that still good?
I think so.
Initially, again, please, friends. David, can I initial yours?
Uh, yeah, that's fine with me, I still agree to all of it.
No, he's talking. I saw his screen. What's that? Oh, I know why, can you say yes? Just a second. Just miss it right next to it. Alright, try that again, David.
David, are you okay with me putting your initials down?
Uh, I am, yep.
Okay, gotcha. Very good, uh, thank you.
With the intention of being a great board member, I commit to be an active listener with my fellow board members.
If you're okay with that, friends, if you still believe that initially, if not, if we need to discuss something, let's discuss it. David, you okay?
Yep.
Awesome.
With intention of being a great board member, I commit to make decisions based on facts, extenuating information, and input from all sides.
What's interesting is your group added extenuating information. I don't know if you knew that or not, but you actually had that input back, and so we wanted to change that. That was the first time we got together and we wanted to change that word, so we did it, and then it's, thanks to you guys. That was awesome. Any questions, David, we good?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
With intention of being a great board member, I understand my role as a board member is to set policy and the employment of the superintendent. All other district operations will be recommended by the administration. If I vote against the recommendations, it is done so with an understanding of all pertinent facts and input.
Are we still there, friends? David?
Yeah.
With the, with intention of being a great board member, I commit to eliminate prejudging and gossip as relates to school business and school staff, including my board teammates.
Are we okay with that, friends? David?
Yep.
Benny, with the intention of being a great board member, I commit to my fellow board members to support the decisions made by the majority of the board, even though I may not fully agree.
Okay, we'll talk about these in just a second, are we okay with that one right there? David?
Yep.
Any discussion there, friends? Bring us home.
With the intention of being a great board member, I commit to my fellow board members to support the mission of the district, embrace what's best for kids while making decisions.
Everybody okay with that one? David?
Yep.
Good boy. Alright, nice job, friend, now, let's just take two seconds to reflect on those. Maybe you remember me, maybe you don't. Some of the discussions we had when we were doing these was, we're a process, we're not an end result. And what that means is, every one of us is gonna stumble over a year, over a month, over two months. We're gonna get left, left-handed a little bit, so let's take it, I'm sorry if you're left-handed, but, I'm not, that's why I said it. Or we're gonna go down the wrong track, or something's gonna go sideways, and, and what that means is, we get emotionally caught up in something, and we lose track of what the bigger picture is. Did I share the helicopter example with all of you? So, we get off the helicopter, and we end up going down the rope, and we're in the fire. We don't need to be in the fire, friends, right? I bet every single one of you have been there, since I was here, everyone, because that's what we do. The reality, though, is, do we have the self-awareness to pull ourselves back from that, we're like, okay, yeah, I might have overstepped my bounds just a little bit on that one, or I did support my teammates the way I should have supported them on that one. That's really the learning piece, that I was really trying so hard to get across this summer with all of them, because it's, it's a work for all of us. And so, yes, we stumbled, and every one of these, we're gonna violate them. Maybe very small, very small and fragile, maybe, maybe barely scratched that surface. But the reality is, we're not perfect. We're made imperfect, right? So, the goal is to, if we, and I really believe you have a very, very, very strong team, is to hold each other accountable in a way that is purposeful, and that, I gotcha. In a way that is, our intentions are pure, to make us better. So, if she stumbles, she decides to go after the elementary principal, when really she's going through the chain of command, she's kind of skipped a few steps, you know what, that might happen, because her child's, we get emotional, we all do. And it's up to us as a team to say, okay, sister, let's think about this for a second, okay? Where are you at? Let's hear it, let's listen, and then let's figure out what's going on. Because there's something we probably don't know that just happened, and we need to offer grace. And then she'll realize, oh my gosh, what a group of teammates that I have, I'm gonna be better for them. So, it's up to you to grow through something like that, that's really the key there, any questions about that? Awesome. So I think it's down farther in the agenda. Uh, you have um, the board learning or the workshop or the quarters?
Yeah.
So I won't say now, but but I think things are looking pretty good for that. I think we're correct. January fifteenth, right?
Yeah.
That's good. Any questions, friends? Stay solid. This is awesome stuff. Thank you for helping pick on y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
Thanks, David.
Wait, are these for us?
You know what? Your initials, right? So when you get back, give them to Tim. And then um, Tim, I didn't save for you last time. Scan them and send them to me.
Okay.
But get get David and Kirk. I I kind of usually pay this for him, but um, if he's okay with that, that's fine. I see. Okay. Yeah, Kirk's on it too. So maybe just scan and send them. Thanks.
Financial reports.
Okay, bank account balances as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty one. In the Citizens Bank checking, we had a negative of one hundred fifty eight thousand, six hundred dollars and seventy three cents. Ben, did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can jump in now. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, yep.
Okay, great. Um, so just wanted to let you know that we were not overdrawn at the bank level. We were holding a large check just to make sure that we could cover the payroll for that Friday, December third. So I actually transferred the money from our money market account on December first to cover that payroll and we also released that check at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Citizens Bank Money Market is one million, fifty five thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars and seventy five cents. The Citizens Bank Money Market Fund forty six is fifty three dollars and eight cents. The Suicide Prevention is sixteen thousand, five hundred and five dollars and eighteen cents with a total bank account balance of nine hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty eight cents.
Move to accept as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
I. I.
Opposed? And reports approved. Uh, next year, consideration of the consent agenda. Uh, on the curricular modification across for students enrollment full time and part time, uh, we only have two new part time to be approved of curricular modification. So.
Move to accept as presented.
So the there's two this month and the other ones that are in here to sign were from we were approved the previous month. So, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
I.
Opposed? All right, David. Um, next administrative report, student enrollment update.
Uh, again, the top matrix, just want to point out, you know, we started the year sixteen oh one, dropped down to fifteen ninety five, back to sixteen hundred. And I try to also update that uh, number monthly in our COVID data dashboard, uh, so that the numbers and the percentages are accurate. Um, dropping down to the middle with just free to reduce lunch rates. I just want to point out that uh, is that twenty two point four two percent? Compared to state average of thirty seven point five. Then in uh, the virtual full time and virtual part time, those are our district presidents that are enrolled in virtual courses in seventy three, full time, forty eight, part time. And then our charter school, the bottom right there, you can see we're at two hundred and sixteen students currently. Um, again, those are all open enrolled to our virtual charter school, uh, which plays into a big number. Then again, in the bottom with our open enrollment in of three hundred and thirty six kids versus out one hundred and twenty six kids for a net difference to the positive of two hundred and ten kids with open enrollment. And again, want to thank all the ladies in in each uh, building and virtual school for working on that enrollment report and and uh, also Sarah Palmerating for putting this together monthly. This is something my predecessor, David Bradley, started years and years ago, but it's a great thing. Um, that's uh, very helpful and informational as enrollment fluctuates. And of course, it's a big part of our finances. Again, thanks to all the ladies for this monthly work. It's every student is accounted for and there are many complicated situations and they just do an outstanding job. And this helps them with the third Friday in September and second Friday in January counts as well.
Next, we have the key word of our school board. Bachelor. Here, you know.
Uh, Zoe Foster. Zoe, thank you uh, so much for the amazing job you did filling in for Mrs. Fritchy. You should be very proud of your perseverance, drive, and your super positive attitude. We truly appreciate what you brought to our building in many ways. Recognition of the girls' basketball coaches and players. Thank you to the girls' basketball pro program and coaches for organizing organizing the Little Dribbles program this fall. You you helped over thirty five first and second graders learn to cooperate, communicate, and develop team building skills. And that halftime program, what a success. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Uh, next discussion of future district needs and priorities.
Um, again, I think the big one is, you know, the work of the community task force and where we're at. And I think the next the next step there would be to, you know, consideration of adopting our resolution for the referendum, decide whether to go or not, and exactly what that would include. Um, so I think this would be appropriate time to start the discussion. And then at some point, if you decide yes, I, you know, we talked about the January fifth board meeting, might be the appropriate time to give us a little more time to uh, communicate. You know, that would buy us another three weeks or so instead of waiting until January I believe it's twenty six is too late technically because we gotta go on the twenty fifth. We can always have a special meeting, but this, I think the board would be appropriate to discuss the feeling and we'll be ready for that meeting. And if so, you wanna, you know, what guidance you wanna give Tom Griggs to start drafting a resolution?
So so what you're saying is take like the first hour or half takes of the meeting on the fifth to discuss and prepare though, correct?
We will actually have to pass the resolution, which will be you know, ten pages long. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it could be short, be long. You could, like I said, start the word, I think. Critical to at least start the discussion to 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 get some direction or, you know, I think probably the biggest one would be the number on the bond resolution. And then um, you know, there's moving parts with the grant and then Jen even with with the compensation matrix as well. Um, you know, you say, well, we need to make thirty million work or whatever, or no and or no tax impact with both resolutions. Seem to be that's where the task force, you know, preferred was to get no tax impact is a great message. Get it done, get all of our needs met and keep it to thirty million on that. And um, no tax impact with the uh, operational levy override compensation piece, which I think is very feasible. Again, uh, Jen, you know. But she's, we've been having those discussions. She's prepared to run some other, you know, numbers and things too. It's it's more about the assumptions, like um, I don't want anyone to think that we're changing a hundred percent or we're changing the salary uh, stamps and stuff. Not that. It's the assumptions that are built into it. Some current assumptions are nobody's ever gonna retire. Or, you know, that ten years early the district and we're not gonna backfill with newer staff or anything like that. So she could change those assumptions a little bit and certainly make uh, those numbers work.
So I reached out to Jen and CC, Tim, not aware of the grant. So it's like, what do we have to do to keep it at zero increase levy? And, you know, we've had so we've had lots of discussions with certain members of the public about the assumptions and challenging the assumptions and all of that. And there was um, I think not a mistake, but a um, an initial assumption was no one ever retired. So our average tenure went from nine years to twenty one years, I mean, over the tenure period. And so what I had asked is if people retired at eighteen or twenty years and they were eligible retirement, so that means they're fifty five. And then they weren't necessarily replaced with a first year teacher, but uh, you know, maybe a fifth or sixth year teacher, what kind of impact might that have? And Jim said it would could make just under a hundred thousand dollars a year in the numbers. And didn't really get have time to ask Baird, you know, is that, what's the mill rate difference in that? Uh, and then that was before I knew that the the grant could take the thirty two million down to thirty million. So that assumption was a zero tax levy increase personally. By adding technology to the wage, if we're off by a hundred thousand and we had a hundred thousand dollars a year to spend on technology, I'm sure Ted Chad could spend it wisely and help us keep up with technology over that tenure period. So I I'm very comfortable with leaving the assumptions that Jen had done before, even though it might be a little high on the wage side, but it as, you know, I think people have acknowledged that there's technology needs chronologically that we can't always fit in the budget. And so I I'm comfortable with the thirty million, assuming that the grant can completely offset things that we would have otherwise added the thirty two million dollars budget. You know, are we pretty comfortable with that's the case?
Uh, that's why I said I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with all of this marketing. Johnson, Wolden, A and E, and Liz on that grant, just confirm that's, you know, it's there. She's wrote the budget. I mean, I have the numbers and what it says. But what is five thousand square feet specifically made in their design of the whole forty thousand square foot CTE edition? You know, what, what is that, you know? And then putting a number to it.
Kind of depends on design and all that. Well, that we would have eight hundred thousand dollars.
See, and is that, and that's what I don't know. Their mechatronics, you know, specific stuff is that aligned with the budget that Mark and Johnson and will they need put together for their CT equipment? That's what we haven't explored yet because it's so new. Like, we just found out we rewarded the grant last Tuesday.
So as we move forward before January fifth, if we can only do we need to do thirty one million to get the whole thing, then maybe we still can use some of those changes in assumptions to keep it in at zero. I don't know. The sense of the task group, what I heard was go for thirty two million, even if it meant sixteen bucks a year more taxes.
And again, that was also Steve said, well, it all kind of depends on the tax bills and when they come out. So I I I do worry. I think zero impact is a lot better chance of selling or, you know, getting past than even eight cents, which is miniscule as it is, but especially if tax bills have increased and, you know, that messaging, we're gonna have to you know, take on.
And I agree that zero is better than even eight cents. So I guess the board needs to give you and Tom Griggs really his feelings as the, are we, do we really want it to be zero? Or are we okay with four cents or eight cents?
I think that's really the only question, though. The scope is pretty defined and, you know, they're all needs, but
so the only question I have is like, I'll do it just briefly, right? Is that at any point, do we ever look at value engineering at all, right? I mean, we came back with a like the what, but then then it's like the how, like, like, how do we do it? Or how do we accomplish those needs? Um, because we saw a sketch, right? And I don't know if that's kind of a budget is like that specific coming off of that side based on footings, flat ground, everything like that versus the other direction, taking up utilities, all of those things. Um, I just wonder like, how far do we have to go to do that, right? I mean, because I've heard people talk about, would we ever do a separate building or something like that for the CTE as opposed to the addition of like, where do we have those discussions or how do we have those discussions?
Well, I believe, yeah, the design, you know, value engineering is a very naughty word. David would uh, confirm. It's it's a word that don't appreciate.
See me shaking my head right now.
So it's more just in the design phase. If 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 Wolden and Market Johnson say thirty million is the number we have to work for, work with, this is what we need. They can design it uh, appropriately. Absolutely, I believe that. They would need that direction and those parameters from board. There's no design in there as, not, it's just a
it's a how many square feet, their experience.
It's a construction of the square footage, though, right? So based on light construction. Alright, so that's what I'm just asking, like, if you would do a detached metal. I don't, I don't, and I don't know if that's feasible or allowable. But if we did that, would that, I mean, per square foot, that would drastically change that number.
And the
I'm just asking.
The bond question itself does not play it just says we have thirty.
More improvements to the high school CTE for K, you know.
And if we think something detached, then Tom needs to put that in.
I'm just, I'm just asking if that was.
If you want that flexibility.
Purchased properties exam.
I think that was brought up in the one meeting.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, but they're just gonna, I think it's, they understand the apothecal compare of what's the best way to get what we need out of the amount that we have adding on flip side of the building, other side of the building by itself. I think all that's that's cool.
Yeah, finishing, flooring, I think all this could be played as polished concrete versus BCT tile.
So it's okay, like, to say the number would come in under or
So we asked for thirty million and we only spent twenty five.
Or twenty nine point two, and that's okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah. We could spend less than thirty million. You know, if
And we can't go outside of the referendums, what it specifies, right? So like, you can't go in and build a swimming, a swimming pool or something. I mean,
Money's left over, so let's do this extra thing. It wasn't on the list.
Yeah, so I'm saying like, not saying that we're going to do that. I'm just saying I think it's gonna be important to explain that.
Yeah.
But that's like what it means. So it's like, we can't go above this, right? That's an absolute cap. Right? And then it's below.
I think the problem is sometimes the public thinks that we ask for something and they don't get what they ask for in there because the prices, you know what I mean? That's, I'm just speaking from my when I talked to my dad, he'll be like twenty years ago, they had this referendum and they didn't keep us air conditioning in the school. They said they're gonna give, you know, that shit, the stuff or whatever. So I want to make sure we do you know, that we get what we say we're gonna give people too. And I understand how costs come in. And I think on the last referendum, they were able to make it fit in by changing some design. But, you know, this came up with the task. There wasn't any functionality that wasn't delivered. Like, one of the value engineering was they had five different points of connection to the building. Well, each one of those points of connection was a couple hundred thousand bucks. Well, let's all do it as one connection and that saved almost a billion dollars. But we got all the functionality. It just wasn't in five different places. So you you, it's really important. That's why I asked Ben the question. How do we know this isn't enough money? The bill, because it's not gonna start for a couple of years. I'm comfortable with the answers that Mark and Johnson gives at the task group that we can get done.
So do we want to take the meeting on the fifth to do this, right? Do we want to do that on the fifth prior to the meeting, right? It's on the calendar. We could utilize a meeting on the fifth to right?
We have to actually pass the resolution on the fifth, right?
Pass the resolution.
We have to know what, we have to decide tonight what we're
What do you want us to at least be working on for the draft for that? And you can tweak it a little bit that night and discuss. And you can tweak it a little bit that night in discussions, but you should have a pretty good working rough draft by then, you know. So do you disagree with any of those bullet points? That's the kind of task force presented. And then I think the biggest question is, is the number, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty, you know, the five hundred.
I said in all seven meetings with different people, and the thing that sparked people's interest is when they, when it came out that we could keep it uh neutral. So I'm gonna, I'd be most comfortable sticking at the thirty million, I think, I don't. Or I think it'll be a lot harder to sell them, even the eight cents, so.
That's, I mean, that's what I've heard.
That's what I have heard there too. Once, you know, it's kind of once you get that price, if we could have gave out eight cents, that would be probably great.
Yeah, I mean, there was some bird noses in that ground for a while. Five meetings in, they changed a little bit, so.
The one thing on the resolution, you know, will be actual language, you know, what the question is on the ballot. Tom will, in our resolution that we passed, will have the actual, and we can't change the column of it, the actual questions that are on the ballots. So that's why this is important.
Correct. Okay, the actual resolution or in motion or anything tonight, but we need to get your direction and start working on that.
What I, what I heard from the task force and what I heard from people in general is like zero impact and at a hundred percent for teachers is what I heard a lot clear. From a majority, that's what I heard.
Is it teachers and administration?
Staff, staff, sorry, staff.
I just.
And it's everybody, like, yeah, those staff, and that's what was modeled, and that's what people came back with, right? I mean, that was the question in the survey.
Staff compensation, I think, would be the actual resolution language. It was just almost identical to last, last year's. And even, even the other one will be very similar, except the numbers. I think stadium and maintenance or the outdoor classroom, um, area or whatever, whatever.
Because I think of elaborate.
Taking a lot of notes, so that is really key, honestly, just those are just, you know, our medication about investment in staff. That's staff salary.
We say stadium, it feels like Wood Hudson then.
Yeah, you picture, right?
Stadium. And that's what I think Peter said is that, say stadium, I think people are thinking a billion dollars. So half of the thirty million is gonna be building a, making Taj Mahal.
I think taking stadium out of there definitely is important because it does have a connotation with it that it's just sports, it's not educational space.
Yeah, I think that's key, and I've, I've got a lot of notes on that and even Brian's notes tonight, as a slight tweak to that, get that wording right.
All right. The operation included some of this technology stuff too, right?
Yeah, the final recommendation included technology in the access, not just compensation.
It was, okay, that's an operation that the bond.
Well, there's, yeah, technology in the bond, but the access levy, what you're gonna spend it on was included.
Like a ten-year plan for what you're.
Okay, just.
The, the only one I have on there is like, can we sell boosters, can we wait that long to put those in? I just get concerned, just like, just watching what happened with the severe weather, right? And other locations where people couldn't get cell service and kind of all of that stuff. And then you go to the middle school or the elementary school and the speaker systems aren't the best all the times. I've been there and people do a great job when it doesn't work every time. Um, but it just like, in case of anything happening, I just, that's one that's just kind of front of mind.
If we can sell the bonds, you don't have to wait for construction.
That could be. That stuff can be, yeah.
You can do that right away.
I don't think you can, just start with an installment, summertime. As soon as we would do it anyway, if it was right out of this current operating budget.
Like some of the maintenance stuff, we don't have to wait to designing a building, we know what, furnace, that stuff, we'd, we'd start doing that.
Yeah, because it'd be in the July one budget, and as long as we get the funds that fiscal year, we're starting, you know, spending.
There's not a, there's a, you have to wait till a start date to do any of it.
No.
Is there an end date?
No, you put it in, because we had, I remember we had money left over for almost years. But we were disputing things.
Yeah, we always want to hold some of the last payments for, right? So this, because they set it down, this dumb, this, yeah, satisfaction.
It was a, I really was impressed with the task group and how consistent the task group was with the survey.
Yeah, I agree.
And like, we really had a good process and, you know, they kept saying, in the task, well, you need to be talking to the people. Well, we're talking to the people right here, you really do represent the community, and I thought the survey really confirmed that.
Okay, good. Uh, next is notice the board of automatic rollover provision for administrator contracts.
So yeah, each, each December, I gotta provide the following notice that each administrator will receive a one-year contract extension on their current contracts, unless the board notifies the administrator writing prior to the end of next month, which is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Of its intent not to do so.
And that, the purpose of that notice is that it doesn't slip the board, because we, would you have known that was part of their contract without, you know, having the administrator remitals in time that we could take action? They reminded us in.
From the School Board Association.
Oh, really?
Who's in there?
I think I did read that, you know.
But I feel like that we have it system.
Uh, next is core gen items, consideration of preliminary approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar, exhibit thirteen A.
Again, uh, this is just something we do annually in December. It's like, uh, admin team gets together, does a draft, brings the board, see if you have any input. You know, again, big picture stuff or even potentially specific dates, et cetera. Um, and then we bring it back uh in January for official approval. We do it so early because, um, a lot of families, you know, uh, because of their work have to submit their time off, et cetera. So they need to know when the breaks are, spring break or things like that. That's why we do it so early, so folks can plan ahead. So this, um, just, you know, briefly speaking here, uh, the main staff calendar that you see, and we do the student calendar based off of this. But, um, very similar to this year, uh, spring break is moved up a, a, a couple of weeks. Um, I think that aligns with daylight savings time, which we noticed is all the big shift of folks. Um, and again, mid-March, you know, we, we typically in the last few years have had it in the March to kind of get in between sports seasons. Um, one detriment, I think Eric is commenting on, is that is the state boys basketball, uh, that puts sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen.
Well, we're gonna be there.
So, so we wanted to take off the school from state. Um, yeah, so that, that's one change, just to move that up a few weeks. Otherwise, you know, we, we always, uh, Easter obviously is, uh, floats around based on the advent calendar, and it's never the same week. So, uh, we tried to align, you know, Good Friday and a longer weekend, professional development days, et cetera, for families um, around that weekend. So that's, um, next year you'll see April ninth as Easter. Otherwise, very typical, starting the same week in August, ending, uh, with P D, ending, uh, the school year, uh, June second, Friday.
Do you already save for weekend for Thanksgiving?
Oh, yeah, that, that was also a change, thank you for pointing that out. Uh, full week for Thanksgiving, again, um, just Thanksgiving week is a big family week, lots of traveling, et cetera. So we, uh, were able to make it work, um, with a floating P D day for staff, uh, to give staff and students that full week off.
Same mono base.
Yeah, so, um, actually, that was included, maybe not. Kelly, this is a stock unit, uh.
It's down here, if you add them.
Yeah, but it was really one more, one seventy-three versus one seventy-two. Yeah. One seventy-one, per, versus one seventy this year. But of course, we always have the same staff days, but per contract, right, a one, one ninety, I think we had even a few more support staff days.
And do we plan for snow days, does snow days make any difference in these days?
Yes, I mean, it, it's different, right? So it's by hours, we, minimum required hours of instruction, grade seven through twelve are the highest at one thousand one hundred thirty-seven. Then it goes down from there to four K. Um, but typically speaking, we have about three days, uh, at the seven twelve level uh, that we can have snow days and not have to take up hours. And then other options always, I keep, um, pass at five minutes to the day, you know, if you go ahead of time enough as well to get this. So it's all about hours and not necessarily days.
Prove these individually and.
Nope, so you just, just FYI for now, and if you have some feedback, it's, you'll be, you know, it does, you don't have to have it right now. If you catch something later, please, uh, shoot me an email or whatever and you can give me feedback, that's things to consider.
All right, um, next on the agenda after those three are considerations, designated annual convention delegates.
So yeah, start with that.
So, so I was, I, I still might be there, but our the marketing officer, or whatever the title is, I don't know exactly, booked my calendar from Monday to Thursday evening. So, um, and I got told it's, it's listed as mandatory, so I'm, I don't know, I'll be there or not. No, no, they want my opinion on that, if I should, so, I don't know.
It is what it is.
I had it blocked on my calendar and this went over the top of it, so, um, I would say it's a low likelihood that I'm able to attend.
I was planning on it until Friday, getting back for the game, the other game that night.
Yeah, Friday, yeah, Friday you'll be able, because it's, it's over, I think keynote, last keynote speakers at ten AM typically on Friday. It's usually getting back is not a problem. So again, the, if the three of you are attending.
I'm going, yeah, but I just want to make sure it's like in, in basketball, like we have to leave, like they have a Tuesday night game.
Correct, yeah.
So you're gonna have to leave right after the games.
Or if you come down, become the one to.
Seventy-seven.
It's still been two and a half days. But delegate.
I think somebody other than me should be.
What day is it? Is that's day two on, is it, or is it Wed- Wednesday afternoon or is it Thursday?
I thought it was one.
So, yeah, it's typically in the afternoon, Wednesday afternoon.
It's probably two hours of your life that you won't get back. But it's, it is an interesting process.
I wanna do that.
He's been there since a governance experience.
I guess I really follow the tale, but.
One X. Yeah, so there's a policy, something committee. So every school district has the opportunity to present things to be voted on by the delegate body. And there's a long process of venting those, and then they either make it or they don't. And, uh.
They vote by the floor.
Twenty recommendations and there's a committee that meets a couple of times and goes through those one by one and joins together and then they make a recommendation. These are the policies that the was, the was the board follows when they're lobbying the legislature. So that these are the things that will be the position of the School Board Association. And so there's big districts and small districts and the, the battle between the haves and the have-nots. And so it's a very interesting political thing, I've been involved in the policy committee. And then you go to the vote and then it's just like, uh, what they have. It's before, you speak again, some people move the question before other people are ready to stop talking about it. And so there's maneuvering, it is kind of interesting, but somebody has to do it.
We need that, it's today, right?
Yes, it's, so one of you raise your hand and I'll be the ultimate, I'll be the ultimate, but I won't be.
I sound so excited.
I know, that's why I'm not volunteer. I've been at a couple of different times.
Don't mess it up.
Yeah.
A formal, um, motion and second.
No, they just designate on the wars.
Oh, his name is second. Thank you.
Put him, put him as a strong. Might be at lunch.
I believe that they'll mail you a packet on.
Yeah.
Or not.
Yeah, a lot of time.
I was, oh yeah, I was nominated for the committee and they do it by districts. And I got nominated by not my district from the guy that was in district. I mean, I think we're in one, four.
Four.
And I was district one representative, because the guy thought I lived in his district and then they approved it. And so I was on this committee for the wrong district. It was interesting, I, I enjoyed that part of it.
Um, so next is other.
It seems like we're good with other.
Yep. Today, uh, important upcoming dates, uh, do we have to add the meeting on the fifth then prior to, I think it's.
It'll just look differently, so it will be some business, obviously. And, you know, we, like, the intention was to have four quarterly meetings, strictly board learning, four hours onsite perhaps, but this has to be on sites because this is gonna be conducted. So we'll meet here, it'll be in a regular agenda, but again, hopefully with approximately an hour or less for business and then three hours for, you know, board development, which we would, would like to just talk to a little bit about what that night's gonna look like, right?
Sure, again, I didn't know we were gonna be cut out an hour, but yeah, I can, um, or we just go till eleven, you know.
I don't think, I don't think this should take an hour.
Probably, that's what I was wondering, should we start a half an hour earlier?
Half an hour earlier, I guess, I'll be plenty, it's a six to ten, it's five thirty.
Did you already make that call? Is it coming from work?
We made it to.
If it's gonna be a quarterly meeting, you know, I don't know if we should put a time constraint on it. It doesn't matter to me how late it goes, I guess. By the way, I won't be there.
You have to pass it with my youngest. That sounded a lot like, I went and said I can't make it. So, no, it won't be, I'm, I'm just kidding about time, we can, we get to whatever we need to do. There, there's a couple of things we've talked about, uh, and met with Jeff and you had talked about doing, um, you know, an activity, first of all, always using.
The keyword.
School boards. Keyword school boards, you know, as a foundation for, for several things. But, um, one of the things is the, back to the responsibility, that's a really fun exercise, uh, and some really thoughtful things in here. Excellent discussion, you know, as far as functionality goes.
If you take half an hour of your time, you can still cover everything you're ahead of. Let's just.
Three here, six. All right, uh, next is the convention, the nineteenth and twenty-first, uh, the twenty-sixth is our regular board meeting at seven. And then the sixteenth is our regular board meeting in February. I don't have to read this, correct?
You do have to read.
Always said that I don't have to read it. So I do need.
Make a motion to go into a closed session, pursuing a, or whatever all there is.
Again, and now we need roll call, votes, right? All right.
Right.
Hi. David?
Hi.
All right. Close session. All right, thank you.
Wait a couple minutes. Sleep off recording, please, Kelly.
Tim, are you sending a link for the closed session?
Yep, I s-